Good afternoon and welcome to the work session for the City Council for April 11th. Who has their microphone on? Okay. April 11th, 2023. I would, just a reminder that written comments can be submitted to publiccomment@flagstaffaz.gov or via these cards. We will have two rounds of public participation. I'm calling this meeting to order. Notice is hereby given to the members of the City Council and to the general public that at this work session, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the city's attorneys on any item listed on the following agenda. City Clerk, can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember House, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. Please stand if you're able.
And who, Councilmember McCarthy, the mission statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Matthews, the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right. Item number five, review of draft agenda for the April 18th.
Mayor, can we get item four first, please?
How many times have I done that? And I just said we'll be taking two rounds of public participation. All right. Number four, public participation. We don't have anyone online. We have a couple in person. Richard Castaneda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We are students at NAU, specifically within the science of sustainability and earth science. And we are doing a capstone project aiming to aid the city and other interested members and other interested parties by increasing engagement in active transportation and catalyzing conversations around transportation in Flagstaff. Now, of course, active transportation is transportation that is generally powered by human energy, and that includes walking and biking. But this definition has been extended to also include other forms, such as electric bikes or scooters, for the purpose of this project. We have created a survey that is aiming to gather information on how residents feel about active transportation in Flagstaff and designed these stickers to encourage participation for these surveys. Our hope is that information about this, from this survey, can be used to inform future budgetary and policy decisions. So far, we have collected over eighty survey respondents and have found a link between transportation, or students, or students, residents, and other respondents that already use active transportation and live in the downtown Flagstaff area, as well as the opposite is shown in the survey respondents for residents that live far away, in areas such as Sunnyside. This aligns with previous studies indicating distance as one of the biggest barriers to active transportation use. The respondents' highest concerns about using active transportation were safety and that it would be too time-consuming. These concerns and distance barriers could be addressed with infrastructure changes and more central city planning or housing. The most popular infrastructure changes that respondents selected were the, to use active transportation, were sidewalk renovations, extensions, protected bike lanes, and protected intersections. Ninety-six percent of the survey respondents felt that the current active transportation system in Flagstaff would benefit from changes such as these. We encourage the city to consider these specific infrastructure changes and the public interest in them as they move forward with the Active Transportation Master Plan. We are aware that infrastructure changes are an ongoing process, so our survey also focused on non-infrastructure options to encourage active transportation, which was informed from research about human behavior changes. The most popular non-infrastructure-related options we listed in our survey were incentives such as saving money on gas, seeing large groups of people participating in active transportation, and city events centered around the use of active transportation. Fort Collins, Colorado, has been a platinum biking community with similar weather conditions to Flagstaff and can be used as a reference for future planning options. I'd like to thank you for your time. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you. Stephen Thompson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, and everyone who's listening online. My name is Stephen Thompson, and I am the volunteer and event coordinator for the City of Flagstaff Sustainability Office. And I'm here just to speak very briefly and invite everyone to attend the Earth Day Celebration that is scheduled for April 22nd. It's a Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but the following one, at Bushmaster Park. The main event is 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., live music, food, close to fifty different organizations promoting sustainability, conservation, and community care. There's a few free workshops involved with that, bike repair, rainwater harvesting, and home electrification. And this is a free event for everyone to come and join us and celebrate this beautiful place we call home. In addition to that, we have a couple volunteer opportunities for that day. And I just want to get the word out about a litter cleanup that is happening at Bushmaster Park and in the surrounding neighborhoods to say thank you to the neighborhoods that are welcoming us into their community that day, making some noise in the backyard. So that's 9:00 a.m. to 10:30. There's a registration sign-up for that. In addition, this year, we are also offering a volunteer opportunity at the Police Department for a drop-off day event. So this is an event that happens in partnership with the City of Flagstaff Police Department, the DEA, the Hazards Product Center, and others, where community members can drop off items like batteries, light bulbs, LEDs, electronic waste, and paper for shredding. And if you have expired medications or prescriptions, the DEA will be there to take those back so they can be disposed of properly. So we're looking for volunteers for that, from 9:00 to noon, as well as people to bring their items, so that you can put your waste in the right place. And for more information about that, visit our website. So you can just type in to a search engine, City of Flagstaff, Earth Day Celebration, and it'll take you right there. Or you can call me or send me an email. My number is 928-213-2144. Email my name, stephen.thompson@flagstaffaz.gov. I hope to see all of you there on a, hopefully, bright and sunny day. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, with a V instead of a PH for email purposes. Francine Moore.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. The reason I'm here as a property owner on the south side of Flagstaff. My concern is the Rio runoff. We're experiencing a lot of flooding lately, and it was my understanding that the City of Flagstaff and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers would be working on this project. But because of the runoff, where the flooding, I have had problems with my flooring once already, and last night, we experienced more flooding in our area. So I'm trying to determine what is going on with that project.
My apologies, but during public participation, we're not allowed to have to-and-from with speakers. But I, staff is nodding their heads, and they will get with you separate from your public comments here.
Very good. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're down to item number five, review of the draft agenda for the April 18th, 2023 City Council meeting. Any questions or comments? All right. It is reviewed. Item number six, seven and eight are proclamations. The first is for Fair Housing Month. So if I could have housing staff meet council and I down here, we will read the proclamation.
It is my honor to read this on behalf of the mayor. Whereas the month of April has been designated as Fair Housing Month by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity, and whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, and the Federal Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988 prohibit discriminatory housing practices, and whereas the Fair Housing Act as amended and other federal laws ensure full and fair access to housing and equal opportunities for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, and is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city. And whereas Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Fair Housing Act, requires recipients of federal funds from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to affirmatively further the policies and purposes of the Fair Housing Act, also known as affirmatively further fair housing, and whereas President Joe Biden, in Executive Order 13988, issued guidance further prohibiting housing discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and HUD implemented this order into fair housing law in February 2021. And whereas members of the above-protected classes are increasingly and disproportionately more vulnerable to displacement, rental housing discrimination, poor-quality housing, and barriers to opportunity due to rising homeownership and rental housing costs, and whereas equal access to housing being a critical component of family and community health and stability and impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies. And whereas solutions to creating and protecting rental housing choice and homeownership requires all programs of government to affirmatively address the removal of barriers to housing choice, and whereas the City of Flagstaff recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities, and whereas the talents of grassroots and nonprofit organizations, housing service providers, financial institutions, elected officials, city government, and others must be combined to promote and preserve integration, fair housing, and equal opportunity. And whereas the City of Flagstaff is committed to affirmatively furthering fair housing and combating discrimination, including overcoming patterns of segregation and fostering inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunities based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, familial status, or disability. And whereas, in passing the ten-year housing plan, the City of Flagstaff committed to protect people from housing discrimination and remove housing barriers by ensuring affordable housing is a part of every Flagstaff neighborhood, working to address disparate impact as part of any development or redevelopment, and continuing Flagstaff's commitments to further federal and Arizona fair housing laws in all housing-related services and programs, valuing the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to equitable housing opportunities and providing fair housing education and resources to the community. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Fair Housing Month.
Woo-hoo! Good job!
All right. So let's get a photo. Okay. Can you get us all?
There we go. Next time.
I love how lively the housing section is.
Is it okay if Sheri just talks a little bit about our training tomorrow?
Yes, please. Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much. We have more to say.
I am from Southwest Fair Housing Council. We are a grant-funded organization designed to help stop discrimination across Arizona. So tomorrow, we will be here with DNA Legal Services to talk about the Landlord-Tennant Act. We'll also be here to talk about fair housing. So if you have some time tomorrow, 9:00 to 12:00, right, meet us here. And even though it's 55 years of passing the Fair Housing Act, I can tell you, we are still fighting hard for the equity and the opportunity for peoples in your community to get housing that is safe and affordable. So thank you for your efforts and your time.
Thank you.
So I believe the last proclamation was in perhaps 14 font or 16 font, and that's why it was two pages. All right. Library staff.
Hello.
We have a few online, too.
Oh, great. Heidi, you don't want to come up here? Okay. Please, yes.
Libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. And libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy, skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing, understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Becky Daggett, City of Flagstaff Mayor, proclaim National Library Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. Speech.
I just want to do a shout-out to my daughter, Kristin, who is a librarian. Thank you.
That was lovely. Thank you. I'm Lynda Tilson, the still very new library director. This is week five for me, being here in Flagstaff. I just had a few things I wanted to mention. This year's theme for National Library Week is "There's More to the Story." So if you haven't been in a library in a while, we still have the books. Don't worry. We're not getting rid of them. We know how important of a brand books are for libraries. We know that. But there are so many more things that libraries offer now, including internet access, checking out things, not just books. There are actually libraries that check out tools now, check out neckties for job interviews, just all sorts of interesting and fun things. And speaking of, I wanted to tell you a few interesting facts about libraries. There are more public libraries in the U.S. than Starbucks. There were 113 million attendees at public library programs. And this is from 2016. It's a little older, but that's more than all Major League Baseball, National Football League, and NBA games combined. So that'll give you an idea of numbers. And then to just bring it down to the Flagstaff, Coconino County area, in 2022, we had 322,661 items checked out to our users, and we had 298,00297 visitors. I know why I can't see this. There, much better. We also had 56,004 Wi-Fi logins, and a large number of those, twenty-some thousand, were in some of the outlying areas that we serve on the reservation that really don't have good internet access, so a very important service for those communities. And then I just want to end with a shout-out for staff, for library staff. Librarians really, really love their communities, and I've been having conversations with all of the staff at the Flagstaff Public Library. And the number-one thing is providing access to all, for all of our staff members, and they are so dedicated to that. And I'm always so impressed with just the depth of caring that librarians have for their communities. So shout-out to staff. Oh, and I almost forgot to mention, you can get a bookmark predictably. We brought bookmarks for people. We are librarians, so. And also, a nice handout that has all of the April events. So, thank you.
And I'll add that the library puts out a wonderful email about events going on, and if you're not already signed up for that, you should definitely get signed up for that. So, staff. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Flagstaff Emergency Communications Center. And public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunicators of the City of Flagstaff have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Flagstaff in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
I just want to say thank you, Mayor and Council, for always acknowledging us during this week. Obviously, there's not a bunch of my staff here because they are at the center answering your 911 calls, so that's where we want them to be. But thank you for all the support that you always give us and recognizing us each year. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, being a 911 dispatcher is probably one of the most stressful jobs in the country, so I really have to hand it to the men and women that work in our center. Takes a special type of person to work in there. Usually, people you're interacting with, they're calling you because it's the worst day of their life. So it is very stressful. And then they have to take that, deescalate that person, and then communicate with them as well as our first responders. And they do a great job, and we're always hiring. If anyone's interested, please look us up at the city website and/or come do a sit-in if you want to see if it's a career path that would interest you. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the recognition.
Always one of my favorite parts of the meeting. All right. We're going to move down to item number nine, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the City of Flagstaff Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan and Staff Recommendations for Program Year 2023 CDBG Funding Allocations. Thank you, staff. Just a quick moment while we grab a laptop.
I'm a notes kind of girl. I don't want to miss anything. Thanks so much for having us tonight, and thank you for the proclamation, Mayor Daggett and Council. I'll talk in the microphone, I promise. All right, almost there. All right. Thanks so much again for having us. I'm really excited to present to you all today with staff's funding recommendations for the city's 2023 CDBG entitlement allocation. You'll all remember, I was just here in January, and so I'll just give a very brief refresher about CDBG. Then I'll tell you about our application process for this year's grant cycle. We'll discuss the applications that we received from our community partners, and then I'll share with you staff's funding recommendations. I'd love to then answer any questions you might have, and I hope to receive any feedback or direction that you have on those allocation recommendations. And I'll be back May 2nd to request a resolution for approval of our annual action plan and its submission to HUD on May 15th. So just a reminder for Council and any of the public that might be learning about CDBG. CDBG provides funding for housing and community development activities. It's funded through HUD, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Flagstaff is considered And Flagstaff is considered an entitlement community. That just means that we receive an annual allocation. And that allocation amount is based on a formula that takes into consideration our population, the age of our housing stock, the congressional allocation for the CDBG program overall, as well as any new entitlement communities in the state or region. And there are other factors that can change the annual allocation amount as well. The most important thing to remember is that we don't have any control or influence over this allocation from HUD. So the primary objective of the Community Development Block Grant Program is the development of viable urban communities through the provision of decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunity, all of which must primarily serve low- and moderate-income persons. And then you, city council, can allocate CDBG funds essentially as you see fit, based on the national and primary objectives, your established priorities, and the needs we've identified in our five-year consolidated plan. The primary, oh, sorry. So along with serving low- and moderate-income persons, to be eligible for CDBG funds, an activity must qualify under one of the following types. It must either serve a limited clientele, be a housing activity, provide an area benefit, or be a job creation or retention activity. So to give you a couple of examples, operational assistance for a homeless shelter would be a limited clientele activity. Down payment and closing cost assistance or ONA occupied housing rehab programs would be housing activities. Area benefits must benefit all of the residents in one of our targeted neighborhoods. So an example of a past project would be improvements at the Hal Johnson Rec Center or street and sidewalk infrastructure updates in La Plaza Vieja. And then job creation and retention activities are designed to create and retain permanent jobs specifically for low- and moderate-income persons. Lastly, there's the criteria that the city must follow when administering CDBG funds that at least 70% of the CDBG-funded projects must benefit low-to-moderate-income persons. However, historically, the city has always served 100% low- and moderate-income persons with our CDBG allocation. So in order to continue to receive our annual allocation, the city must submit a series of documents to HUD at various times. The first is our annual action plan. It tells HUD what the city is going to do with its entitlement funding and how those activities will meet the goals of the consolidated plan, our five-year plan. Next is the CAEPER, or the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. That's due every September. And it reports to HUD what we did with the funding and what the accomplishments were of those funded projects. And then every five years, we complete and submit our consolidated plan. It's a five-year assessment of housing and community development needs. That was last submitted to HUD in 2021 and it's defined Flagstaff's goals since then and for the next three years. And then we also submit a fair housing plan called an Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, which is our commitment to affirmatively furthering fair housing, which you all learned about tonight. Occasionally, we also will submit amendments to our annual actions plans when it's necessary. For example, when we received funding through the CARES Act, we did have to do amendments to incorporate those funds. The last thing I want to mention is that the city can designate through its consolidated plan target areas for revitalization and area benefit projects. So the selected area must be primarily residential. It must contain a high percentage of LMI households, low- and moderate-income households, and a concentration of minority populations. And so when we establish target areas, we also consider feedback from our public input process during the development of the consolidated plan. So we have identified for this five-year plan La Plaza Vieja, Sunnyside, Southside, and Pine Knoll as target neighborhoods. That means that any area benefit projects in those neighborhoods are automatically eligible. So every two years with new council, the Housing Section establishes the council's CDBG goals. And so we met in January, and your goals were to provide housing through both rental and ownership to address homelessness and support neighborhood revitalization and workforce development. And this year, on our NOFA application, we did provide 10 points for projects that were meeting those first two priorities and five points for projects that were meeting the second two priorities. So it's staff and ranking committee's responsibility to thoroughly review each proposal to ensure that the activity is eligible, that it's viable. Then we conduct an agency risk assessment. And then we provide our recommendations to you based on the ranking committee's results. And then you, council, make final funding decisions. And so what do we consider? Well, risk is really important to consider when it comes to CDBG funds. Regardless of whatever agency is administering the project and receives the funds, it's the city that's the responsible entity to HUD. And so because of this, the Housing Section and the Raking Committee really consider a lot of things when it comes to reviewing proposals. So for example, we review the agency's past performance, how they define success, and if they were successful in the administration of their past projects, just their general organizational experience. We review their financial capacity, what kind of financial policies and procedures they have for their organization. And we ensure that their grant request is realistic. And then in addition to that risk assessment and to your priorities, the Raking Committee also evaluates each proposal and scores them based on things like the number of individuals who will be served, the agency's leverage abilities, their collaboration efforts with other community organizations, and really any community needs based off data from the consolidated plan and the 10-year housing plan, as well as data brought from the applicant as well. And as you know, CDBG requires extensive public participation. So to date, for this specific annual action plan, the city has held five public meetings. We started things off last summer with a meeting hosted in partnership with a League of Neighborhoods. The meeting was centered around really listening to residents from our target neighborhoods, hearing about their concerns, and receiving feedback on what residents feel are needs and priorities in their neighborhoods. So city staff from community development, Capitol, Code Enforcement, Parks and Rec, they all attended. And the focus was on needs that could potentially be addressed with CDBG funding, but also through a number of other funding sources and providing education as well as to how projects are identified by the city for funding. In addition, we hosted a public meeting prior to the release of the Notice of Funding Availability on February 1st. This provides local info to local organizations. And then we had another meeting after applications were received just to give the community an idea of what we received and receive any public comment from them. And then last month, we presented these recommendations to the City Housing Commission as well. All right, let's talk money. HUD has released final allocation amounts. Our entitlement allocation for program year 2023 is $541,191, which is about 5,000 more than our entitlement was last year. We're happy to see it going up. We're able to add to this funding with program income. Program income is funds from loans that are paid back to the city from past rehab or down payment assistance programs, as well as a reallocation of deobligated funds. So this is from our 2021 program year. Native Americans for Community Action was allocated funds for a small business assistance program, and they have asked the city to deobligate those funds. So this means that in total, we have over $740,000 for our program year 2023 allocations. In total, we received over $2.1 million in requested funds. We did receive one internal funding request and two applications for public service projects, as well as five for housing and/or public facility revitalization projects. You'll recall that we are capped at using just 15% of CDBG funding for public services. So you can see that those two are in a separate category on the bottom. Prior to our presentation to the Housing Commission, staff from Capitol and Housing discussed the requests of funds for Phase 2 of infrastructure improvements in La Plaza Vieja. At that time, the request was withdrawn due to the lack of identified gap funding and some timely spin-down concerns. Capitol might submit a request in the future after leveraged funding has been identified for that project. So, the total available funds for our administration of the CDBG program is $130,000. And for public service projects, we can use up to $98,000. That's in alignment with HUD's caps on funding for those categories. Then the Raking Committee recommended full funding for the two highest-ranking applications, which would max out that public service funding, providing $98,000 to Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona for operating support for JoJo's Place, which is 44 units of transitional housing. Then it would provide full funding for Northland Family Help Center for some rehabilitation needs, a new roof and a new parking lot for their family and youth shelter. Then the remaining funds would be used to provide partial funding to an acquisition project from Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona and a project at Flagstaff Shelter Services newly purchased Motel Valanturn. This is a second location. These applications did provide information for the Raking Committee about how the projects could proceed with just partial funding. Housing Solutions had asked for $125,000 per unit and can therefore purchase two of the three units they proposed with just this partial application. And Flagstaff Shelter Services can use funds to install kitchenettes in about a third of the 103 units at the lantern that they had proposed. Additionally, both organizations will be able to request funding through next year's CDBG process if they desire for the remaining units of those projects. So as I mentioned before, these recommendations were also presented to the Housing Commission. And they made a motion to forward them as presented to city council. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have and receive any feedback you have about the funding recommendations for this year.
Thank you, Christine. Any questions, comments? I have a question.
Sure.
The project on the previous page for La Plaza Vieja, was that sidewalks?
Yes, that is sidewalks, as well as, I think, some drainage right on, I'm going to forget the name, but O'Leary, right in front of Haven Montessori. They did use CDBG funds for Phase 1 of that project. But it was during the pandemic, and costs were much higher than they originally thought they would be. So they phased it. And so this would be Phase 2 of that project.
Okay. And I think I say this every time we talk about CDBG, but in a, prior to being on council, I served on this committee to score and rank all of the applications. And I can just attest to the rigor that each of the applications is put to and also the tremendous work that all of these nonprofits are doing throughout our community.
Absolutely.
All right, while I was talking, did anyone come up with a question or a comment? All right, thank you very mu-- oh, Councilmember Harris.
So can I ask when the La Plaza project is going to happen?
That's a great question. That would be something we would need to ask Capitol. But essentially, once they've identified leveraged funding so that CDBG isn't the only source of funds in the project, it would be probably more appropriate for them to request CDBG funds at that time.
Thank you.
And this would be a good area for residents of Flagstaff to lobby their congressional delegation about for increased funding for CDBG, wouldn't it?
That is a great question.
I say--
Yes, the congressional allocation does impact how much money our community gets, absolutely.
Yes, great. All right, thank you. I don't see any further questions.
All right, well, I get to stay up here. And now we get to talk about ARPA. There we go. All right. Okay, so we're going to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, specifically for housing assistance. So as many of you know, the American Rescue Plan Act created the SLFRF program, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. We're just calling them Local Recovery Funds to keep it simple. And these funds were for states, territories, municipalities, counties, tribal governments to be used for supporting COVID-19 response, decrease the spread of the virus, bring the pandemic under control, to replace lost revenue, to support an equitable recovery through immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, and to address the systematic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to the unequal impact of the pandemic on certain populations. So discussions regarding allocation amounts and categories for the ARPA funds for the City of Flagstaff were held in October of 2021. At that time, city council provided direction on the use of these funds. And that included $400,000 for congregate care services, such as shelters. It included $300,000 to aid for victim services programs and $1.9 million for housing assistance. And these were the categories that would be administered by the City of Flagstaff Housing Section specifically. So tonight, we'll be presenting our recommendations for the $1.9 million for housing assistance. In the coming months, we will release a NOFA for the funding for victim services programs and be back to present those recommendations to you as well. And I'm also going to provide just a brief update now on our congregate services funding. So the Housing Section had allocated funds under the Shelter Services category through both a Notice of Funding Availability as well as two emergency allocations. All of the operational funding has, at this point, been expended. And at this time, these projects are almost completely spent down. Northland Family Help Center and Catholic Charities are just finishing up on the final physical improvements that were done at their shelter sites. So local recovery funds for housing assistance projects and programs were intended to improve community resilience, address disparities of disproportionately impacted communities, and create and preserve stable, affordable housing and prevent eviction. So the purpose of the projects, which could be programs, services, or capital expenditures, needed to respond to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19 by supporting the health of communities and helping households recover from economic impacts, particularly disproportionately impacted low-income workers and people of color. So projects that we outlined in the NOFA, but that applicants were not limited to, included affordable rental housing production and preservation, affordable housing rehabilitation, expanded homeownership investments, capital repairs and improvements, acquisition of land for affordable housing development, as well as legal aid services, tenant outreach and assistance, and development of affordable housing. The US Treasury, who is in charge of the ARPA funding, defines beneficiaries as households that can receive or benefit from assistance based on impacts of the pandemic that they experienced. And as part of the NOFA development, we were actually allowed as a city to define beneficiaries based on local needs specific to our community. So per our 10-year housing plan, we know that households with an AMI up to 100% were impacted negatively by the pandemic. As well as applicants were also able to propose definitions of other communities impacted or disproportionately impacted by the pandemic with any statistics or data to support that determination. All of the applications that we received proposed to serve households at 80% or below or 100% or below. We didn't have anyone that proposed to serve any higher than that. Another guideline for funding recommendations that we included in the NOFA application was the overarching goals of the 10-year housing plan. So the city is, of course, committed to utilizing the local recovery funds for projects that align with our initiatives and strategies that were outlined in that 10-year housing plan. So we asked applicants to explain to us how their projects would aid the city in its effort to meet those goals. And those goals include impacting at least 6,000 low- and moderate-income Flagstaff residents and creating or preserving 7,976 housing units. Some other broad criteria we use to evaluate applications included-- oh, I'm so sorry, you guys-- include, just in general, is the project eligible? Can it be completed within any ARPA expenditure time limits? These do have a sunset date. And so we wanted to make sure that the project could be completed by December 31st, 2024. Leveraging existing and existing community partnerships or existing funds, as well as the long-term value and impact. We wanted to see these funds make a permanent impact in our community. Some additional criteria were participation in our continuum of care, commitment of the organization to diversity, equity, and inclusion, local community needs, evidence-based interventions, and then also the applicant's capacity for administration. Those, these funds are more simple to administer than CDBG. They are still federal funds, and it's important that our applicants are able to administer them successfully. So to give you an idea of the requests that we received, this slide highlights the funding amount requested the agency and the project, as well as who they proposed to serve. So Catholic Charities asked for funding for outreach for their PATH program. DNA Peoples Legal Services requested funds for outreach as well as for eviction prevention for up to 85 households. Flagstaff Shelter Services asked for operational funds for their hotel shelter. Habitat for Humanity requested funds for pre-development and site work for their starter home project at Timber Sky. Homeless Youth Connections requested operations for their newly purchased transitional housing unit. And then Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona requested funding for construction at JoJo's Place. The Salvation Army has requested funds for rental assistance. And there's a Lytec development that is called Vias on Lake Mary. They've requested funds. And in the NOFA, we did identify that for-profit developers could request funding on a loan basis. The US Treasury allows us to use a loan structure. It has to be a 20-year loan. And when-- And when that, when those funds come back to the city after whatever payment schedule is negotiated between the developer and the city, those are considered unrestricted funds. So they could be reused for other housing projects at some point, if the council should choose to do that. So here are the ranking committee's recommendations. You can see the average scores that were provided. Now, you can see that we had a group of applications that were at 178 and above, and then a group of allocations, of recommendations that were at the 165. They all scored really similarly. And so the ranking committee felt that it was best to fund from the highest ranking down until we ran out of money. And so that meant that we funded the first, the top five there fully. And then we realized that the scores were so close on those last three applications that what felt like the best use of the funds, the most impactful, was to fund them equally, a percentage of what was left of the funding. And so that equaled to about 79.4% of funding for those last three projects. And again, that amount for Vias on Lake Mary is a loan. The other funds are all grant funds. So yeah, we presented these to the Housing Commission as well, and they recommended that we forward them to you as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. The next steps will be that we will draft contracts with all of these organizations, and then those will be on consent agendas, or if they need to be discussed on future agendas, to be approved by council.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Councilmember Harris?
Yes, and I've asked this question before. So how are we going to ensure that these organizations are reaching out to the community and not just putting things on a website and expecting everybody to find it?
That is a great question. So what we did do, based on your feedback, actually, just this last council meeting, is we have started to incorporate a question asking what their plan of outreach and marketing is, especially to target neighborhoods and the folks that they propose to serve with these projects. And so as a part of our job to administer these funds is to make sure that there's follow-through on behalf of these organizations. So when we monitor, we make sure that they have met all their goals, that they have followed all of the outreach methods that they said that they would. And so we have incorporated that in our internal process for assessing applications, and then also assessing performance of the organization as they administered the funds.
And then how can— so you're going to monitor, you meaning the housing. And then how can people find out what the results of your monitoring is? Ask that correctly.
I do believe that that's public information, but that's actually a new question for me. It's, I think, by request. We don't usually post monitoring results on the website, just because there's a lot of information on the website, but that could definitely be requested for us to share. Oh, and in the CAEPER, too, of course, yes. So in our Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, we do summarize our monitoring results for HUD as well. So that's public document.
Sorry. I have a lot of questions regarding this. And so then, we won't know if they've met their goals until after the project. So while the project is in place, there's no way to know that they're meeting their marketing or their outreach goals until after it's over.
That's a great question. So we actually do have what we call a project tracking spreadsheet that we upload onto our website every six months. It has every grant that the Housing Section is overseeing. It shows their spend down, as well as the progress they've made towards their goals. So we do upload that every six months. And then, of course, if you wanted an update in the meantime, we would be glad to provide any information on project performance.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
So I was just curious on the number of individuals that they will serve with these funds. Is that over a year's time, or what's the timeframe?
Yes, so it is over a year's time, because that is how we contract with them, is on a year timeline. Now, sometimes, they do ask for extensions for their contracts, and then we take into consideration their project and performance up until that point before we grant an extent, an extension. But yes, so that is over a year of reporting.
Okay, and then my other question is, in the ranking, you know, obviously, the critical issue first is just, you know, shelter services are transitional, but was there a different ranking value placed on that versus giving assistance to then a permanent solution?
Right, so that's a great question. So actually, we did do that the other way around. For ARPA, we really felt it was important to ensure that these funds were used to make a permanent impact in our community. And not that shelter services don't make a permanent impact, but for something that would impact long-term. And so we did reward, award extra points for projects that were construction-based and creation of units.
Any other questions? I have a couple. The 80%, is that enough for those three organizations to, to do at least most of what they wanted to do, or some of what they wanted to do?
Yes, so same as with CDBG, we included a question asking how they could or could not proceed with partial funding. And they all stated that they would adjust how many clients they serve based on that funding, except for Vias at Lake Mary said that they would look to identify additional gap funds. Habitat for Humanity did state that they— pre-development is tricky, because you might need to go ahead and develop all 24 units, depending on what the funds would be used for, but they said they may need to do fewer sites, but they may not. It will just depend on their ability to identify other funds.
Thank you. One more question. Well, actually, this is a statement. I just want to congratulate how— it was very exciting to have this money, to be able to allocate to all these very worthy areas, from local businesses to housing. And you came up with the mechanism for distributing this money very quickly. And I know it's a lot of work to, to, to look through all of these applications and also to monitor, and I'm just very grateful to you all.
Thank you. And we'll pass that thanks to our volunteers on the ranking committee. We had Housing Commission members volunteer, and we're really grateful for their help as well.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. I was a little surprised just to see the $75,000 ask for rental assistance, because that, you know, that's a frontline solution before people face housing insecurities and lose their housing. Do you have any comments on that? And then I'll ask you my next question after.
Yeah, so I think my comments would basically just kind of give perspective on how the application ranked. Essentially, I think the ranking committee felt that the Salvation Army had a lot of other funding sources for eviction prevention funds. They also did not have any experience administering funds with the City of Flagstaff. So that was the reason for their lower scoring. We're also aware that the county has eviction prevention funding, that they're still spending of CDBG funds through—we're actually administering that grant out of CDBG CV funds.
Then my second question, and maybe this isn't the right platform, but just out of curiosity. My memory, if my memory serves me right, the Flagstaff Shelter Services, the hotel operation, when acquired, was for permanent supportive, not shelter. So is that like a temporary service until they get the renovations done, or?
Yeah, so how it works is the funds that they use through ADO allow them to run those hotels as emergency shelters, transitional housing shelters for five years. Then they convert to permanent supportive housing at that point.
And it's a requirement that they operate as transitional shelters?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. And maybe you answered this already. I'm a little out of it tonight, but wondering, do you give feedback to the applicants so that next time around, they know why they're ranked the way they are?
Absolutely, yes. And we always encourage meetings with us to talk about their application, not just how this one was, but in the future, to prepare their future applications as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
So just a kind of process question. So if a, if an organization has not had any experience administering funds from the city, and they're not awarded, how do they get experience?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's one we kind of have, we get to ask ourselves every year. So we have had situations where we did fund organizations that had less experience, and sometimes, it's been amazing to see their growth and their ability to professionally manage those funds. And then we've had situations where it was clear that the applicant was not going to be able to actually expend the funds, and they had to give them back or deobligate them. So it kind of depends on how their organization is set up. So I'd say that there are organizations that are just getting started, have never had any grants at all, versus an organization that has had some grants, and they've successfully administered a lot of projects, they lean closer towards being ready to administer projects with CDBG funds. Kind of like that growing, as they manage more and more funds from varied sources, we see that they have that experience and that they might be ready to take on the CDBG or ARPA funds.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Are they able to get a fiduciary? I don't know if that's the right word, but I remember startup nonprofits where, for that first year or so, they would have a sponsor, a fiscal sponsor, to help them. Is that a capability in this?
You know, I think that would be a possibility. We would probably prefer that they partner with a more experienced organization.
Do you ever make those kind of suggestions? Because, you know, I'm thinking about, we have lots of nonprofits in this community that's doing some amazing work. And sometimes, the bigger nonprofits aren't reaching the people that need to be reached because they are so big. So do you ever talk about or work with groups to partner with smaller groups where they can reach those populations?
Yeah, that's a great—
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a great question. So yeah, in technical assistance meetings, I have made those recommendations, not just to small nonprofits, but out of town as well. So we've had folks, large organizations from Phoenix, say, "We're going to come up and do this and this." And we'll say, "Okay, well, who have you met with in Flagstaff who's already providing those services? What kind of partnerships do you have? Do you know for sure there's a gap in that you're needed? Or is there a way for you to partner with an organization that's already doing this work?" And so, yeah, we have met with a couple of smaller housing-based organizations and recommended that they meet with some of our more experienced grantees to discuss their projects and potential for partnership.
And I'll add that I know for a fact that staff is very accessible to every group year-round, even if it's just a quick question, or you want help step-by-step going through the grant application. And that is appreciated.
Yes, we do do that for CDBG. For ARPA, we were a little, we did a more traditional procurement, and we weren't as hands-on and one-on-one with the organizations, just to maintain that official procurement. But with CDBG, we are happy to do technical assistance meetings as needed to help the applicants.
Councilmember Harris?
And I would just say that if we're going to address the issue and try and get to some point of our affordable housing or workforce housing, we're going to need everyone on board. And so the more we can do to get all of us on board would really be helpful, to help us move in that direction sooner. Otherwise, we're going to just be paddling, duck paddling, or dog paddling, or whatever it is, not getting anywhere fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
And city manager, might we, when all of the ARPA monies have been either allocated or expended, could we have maybe not such an in-depth presentation, but just a presentation of all the money and where it went?
Excellent idea, and of course, we can, yes.
Thank you. All right, we're moving down to item number 11, and that is city procurement policies and procedures. Welcome, staff. Thank you, housing.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Patrick Brown, your Purchasing Director. I'm here tonight to give you a little bit of information and background on purchasing, what we like to do over in my section. So as we go through, you're going to learn a little bit about the purchasing team. They're here with me, or most of them are. The roles and responsibilities of purchasing, and then some baseline purchasing policies and procedures. We'll talk a little bit detailed. There's to, that may be interesting. And then I'll offer up a few things that we have on the horizon that council be, will be seeing in the near future. So let's start with staff. Like I said, I have most of my staff behind me right now. I have one staff member in training out of state, so she couldn't be here. And we'll start from the top of the org chart, and that's me. I'm Patrick Brown, Purchasing Director. I've been with, in purchasing at City, the city, for 15 and a half years. And then down to the left, we have Adriana Crouch. She's our administrative specialist. She's on the end over here. And Adriana just started with us just a few short months ago in January. Our purchasing manager, as we're going down, is vacant. It's been vacant for about a year. We've been having a few recruiting difficulties, getting somebody to fill that position. So we're hoping to fill that pretty soon. And then we go over down to the left, we have Emily Markell. Emily is our procurement specialist, and she is our acting purchasing manager currently. She is filling in some of those gaps for me, and she is right there. Emily has been with the purchasing team for four years, but with the city for six. She came to us from Housing. And then straight across from Emily, we have Teddy Callen. Teddy Callen is one of our purchasing specialists. Teddy's right here. Teddy started with us just a little over three weeks ago, and he's going to be coming up here tonight. So then we move down to Sam Ellsworth, who is down to the left. She is one of our buyers. She will be celebrating her one-year anniversary with us next week. And then finally, bottom right is Leanne Garcia. She is our other buyer. She has been in purchasing for about five years now, and that's actually kind of her second tour. She was in purchasing, left for a while, came back because she loved us. And she's been with the city for 24 years, so she has some longevity. Our mission for the purchasing section, the mission of the purchasing section, is to support the goals and objectives of the city by delivering consistent and professional procurement and management support to all employees in accordance with all applicable local, state, and federal procurement rules and regulations, and to assist in making best-valued procurement decisions while maintaining the highest value or ethical standards. So now I'm going to turn it over to Teddy Callen, and he's going to go over the next few slides with you, talk about some purchasing rules.
Hi.
You're in the hot seat after only a couple of months. Oh, oh, three weeks!
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Again, I'm Teddy Callen, and thank you for having me here today. I'm going to briefly go over the purchasing department's role here at the City of Flagstaff, starting with sourcing. And we seek out material goods, tangible assets, professional services, and capital improvements for each department within the city. We manage both formal and informal solicitations, which Patrick will go over more in depth shortly, and perform monitoring, evaluation, and quality control of vendors selected for the city, while also negotiating and monitoring costs. And quite importantly, we ensure that the City of Flagstaff is adhering to purchasing laws and regulations in order to ensure a fair and ethical procurement process. These laws are so crucial, as we are the stewards of the taxpayers' money. We seek to procure the best products and— We seek to procure the best products and services at the best possible price through a guaranteed equitable, competitive, and unbiased process. We work with each of our end-users throughout the procurement process, ensuring that they have a clear understanding of how it works and how we are here to help, all the way to the delivery of the goods or services. The purchasing department is also a conduit to all of our many vendors and Flagstaff and beyond, and we work to maintain positive relationships with all of them as representatives of the city. We also have some additional responsibilities in our department, including processing of an average of 3,000 purchase orders annually, managing both the P-card and city-issued cellphone program, managing the disposal of city surplus property, and maintaining all vendor files and certificates of insurance. And lastly, we're lucky to have Adriana, who is administrative support for not just us, but all of the Management Services Division. Thank you again for having me today, and I'm going to pass this off to Emily.
Okay. Mayor, Council, Emily Markell, procurement specialist for the City of Flagstaff. I am here to talk to you about regulatory requirements. It's a little dry, but if you're in the middle of it, it's exciting. So, it started off as primary Arizona Revised Statutes. We often refer to them as ARS. This is primary state rules and regulations procurement abides by. City Charter, I would hope you all know this. It's our city-specific rules and regulations built just for us. Procurement Code Manual combines ARS and City Charter with more definition and details, allowing us to properly lead any form of solicitation in any correct manner to do so. Next, we have, as required, Maricopa Association of Governments MAG specifications. City of Flagstaff Revised MAG specifications. I spent a lot of time with this. This is all through groups throughout Arizona as a board reviewing and guiding construction. These are the standards that we abide by. Next is state grant provisions, federal grant provisions, and also stuff like FAA provisions. These are just areas to help guide us to make sure we do everything correct, legal, and fair. Arizona Revised Statutes. We're just going to read this one. Example titles, Title 9-4.1, Purchase/Sales/Or Lease A Property. Title 34, All Construction, Construction Procurement Requirements For Public Works, Building, and Improvements. Title 41-2632, Authorizing Agencies To Participate In Cooperative Purchase Contracts. We see these often. This allows other agencies to do the due diligence of determining that this is a good company that we can work with and purchase anything from them. Arizona Procurement Code, Article 1.4, Competition And Maintaining A Fair, Open Process. This is probably one of our favorite things to say often with people, fair and open process. City Charter, Article 5, or no, Article 8, Contracts, Section 1, All Contracts Under Supervision Of City Attorney. Section 2, Purchases And Contracts Over 50,000 Approved By City Council Shall Be Advertised For Bids, Formal And Cooperative. We post these in the Daily Sun, and then we put them out in Planet Bids. Section 3, Bids Shall Be Pursuant To Arizona State Procurement Code As Amended By The City Council, City of Flagstaff Procurement Code Manual. Once again, just guidance for us to make sure we do this correctly. Section 9, Leases Of City Property, Leases Of Land Building And/or Equipment. My last part. Procurement Code Manual. All of us in procurement spend a lot of time in this manual. It's fun, it's good, it's 71 pages of yummy information. Article 7, Informal/Informal Limits, Informal Procurements Under $50,000. Formal Procurements Over $50,000. It's pretty cut and dry. You'll always see if it's over 50,000. You'll see us here. Article 9, Formal Procurement Process. Conduct Through An Open-Sealed Solicitation Process. We spend a lot of time in here. We get to know the project, we get to know the equipment. It's fun. I've learned a lot over the last three years. Article 20, Procurements From Solicitations By Other Governments. This is what I was talking about earlier, cooperative contracts and joint solicitations. This allows more than just this agency to do the due diligence of figuring out if this is good, proper, fair, and competitive. We get others that are professionals in this environment to help us out with this. Thank you. I'm ready to pass off to Patrick.
No.
Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
I did, yeah. I don't think open-sealed solicitation process is exactly an intuitive title. Can you explain how the process can be both open and sealed? And maybe just, perhaps my question is betraying a certain ignorance of something else underlying the process in general, so I just invite you to elaborate a little bit.
Would you like me to talk about my cradle-to-grave moments with an end-user? So, usually I'm given a request for, let's say, a service. It might be construction. We'll go from there. I go work with the end-user, someone in the staff. We determine what needs to be done, what are the licensing and everything else that needs to be happening. We make it into what is called a formal solicitation of invitation for bid. We put it into Planet Bids and advertise it out into the Daily Sun. This allows everyone to see said bid request, and people can enter in their bids. Now, that's the open part. We can all see that this is a live bid. Those bids go in. No one can see the bids until the very close of it, once it's done being solicited. At that point, anyone in the public can see the dollar amount for the subtotal of this bid. That's it. They cannot see the rest of the bid and the breakdown of it. At that point, I take it, and I work with the end-user and determine which is the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. This way, we're being responsible with the taxpayers' money, and we're also getting the project done. After that is done, we figure out if we have to do evaluations, but most often not. After that, we go to you all and ask for approval of an award. Once that's done, then the other bidders are allowed to ask us, "Can we see those bids?" Closed, now open, and they can see it. Another part is when we do a larger solicitation with a request for proposals or a request for a statement of qualification. That's when we have evaluations, and we don't talk about anything, very closed, until we are able to determine who we want to award and work with you all. So, we will often get requests from other vendors and contractors asking where we are on the solicitation. All I can say politely is we are in evaluation mode, and I'll let you know as soon as we get to a final answer. Does that help you? Any other questions?
Councilmember Harris, did you have a question? You kind of looked like you were going for the microphone. Okay.
It's just a lot of information.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Teddy. I just want to add to that open and sealed, because it does kind of have oxymoron to it. Open means it's open to the public. It's open to everybody. Sealed means they submit a sealed proposal or bid, and we can't see it until the deadline. After the deadline, we're able to see it, so that there's no, nobody feels like we've tampered with it. If we're able to open it or see it before it's due, somebody could cry foul and say, "Well, you worked with this vendor to change their bid or their proposal." So, sealed is totally a sealed bid. And that actually comes from a long time ago, before we had electronic bidding that we have now. They were in envelopes that were sealed, and they couldn't be opened until the deadline of the bid. So, open to the public, to everybody, sealed in the capacity that nobody can see them until the deadline. So, where did you leave me? Right here, the basics. So, let's move into some basics, and then we'll grow from there. So, it all starts with a request from our end-user. I want you to know, an end-user is any staff member with the City of Flagstaff. If they have a procurement need, they're one of our end-users, and we help them. So, the end-user makes the request. They send a request over to purchasing saying, "Hey, I need to purchase three widgets. Can you help me?" Absolutely, that's what we're here for. The end-user defines the scope, because they know what they want, we don't. But we'll help guide that process to help dial in a scope that makes sense and that bidders or proposers will understand when they see it. They write the specifications. A lot of times, they'll get help from a technical expert to help them write specifications that they need, and that would be part of the scope. And then they give us the timeline. Hey, purchasing, we're on a tight schedule for this. We need to try to get this in place by, in the next six months, or three months, or two weeks, or yesterday. So, they define the scope, the specifications, and the timeline. And they, the procurements that generally happen are material good and tangible assets, which are vehicles, tangible assets, and vehicles, our vehicles, property, and equipment. So, fire trucks, the sale of a piece of property that we want to sell, or maybe a generator for equipment. Services, there's multiple levels of service. There's professional service. Professional services are those higher caliber services like architect or engineer that are more technical, and they need to be certified. So, we'll go, that's a professional service that we will draft a contract with. Consulting services, that's when we say we want to have somebody come in and do an analysis of something or do some research on something. That's that kind of consulting services. And then general services, that's like hiring somebody to do a repair or maintenance on something, our elevator, or sandblast one of our water tanks. All of those we've done, and we have. And then capital improvements. I think you're probably all familiar with capital improvements. We just had a retreat last Friday to talk about capital improvements. So, capital improvements has two different flavors to it, and it's the design. So, we need to design a project, so that's a procurement. And then construction, we need to build it. So, capital improvements, they'll come to us with, "We need to build a widget out on 89A." Okay, let's go about doing this. Do you have drawings? Do you not? A lot of that information we ask them drives the direction of what solicitation we're going to use to help them get the building out there on 89. So, let's talk a little bit about thresholds. Thresholds, these are the spending thresholds, the procurement thresholds. These are kind of what, not kind of, these drive the type of solicitations we do. So, you heard us talk about, a little bit about informal and formal. These are the thresholds inside and around those informal and formal solicitations. So, we'll start with the informal. You'll see a PCM next to the type of solicitation. That stands for Procurement Code Manual, and that means policy. So, I wanted to kind of let you know what drives that threshold when you're looking at it. So, 0 to 5,000, it's an informal process. And at that level, our end-users or staff, ourselves, can direct select a vendor. We can go right to a vendor, say, "Hey, I need 50 widgets. It's $4,800." They can direct select them. 5,001 to $15,000, that require quote, that requires quotes, and that's an informal process as well. But those verbal, they can be verbal quotes, but those verbal quotes need to have information for us. They need to be documented. So, we need to know who gave them the quote, the name of the company, contact information, and the quote that they received. So, they have to be documented verbal quotes. 15,001 to $49,999.99, which is just under the 50,000. Those require three written quotes. So, we need to see a minimum of three written quotes on that, on company letterhead. So, ABC Company, 123 Company, and Company America, we need to see three. And they need to be signed by that vendor, that this is a valid quote. And then 50,000 and over, that is a charter requirement, and you'll see charter there. And this is a formal process. That's a formal solicitation. These are publicized solicitations, so we publicize them. We open them to the public for everybody to submit on, a proposal, a bid, a statement of qualifications. We'll talk more about those later. And those all require council's approval, anything over 50,000. So, we'll solicit. If it's $50,200, we're coming to you all to approve that contract, all the way up to whatever we're spending, 80 million, but I hope we're not doing that. And then we'll dive a little bit deeper now into some of the informal and formal requirements. So, informal, we talked a little bit about that in the previous slide. This solicitation, this is for all procurements under 50,000. And so, this is what is driven by the Procurement Code Manual, its policy. For procurements under 50,000, we do not need to advertise. We can handpick who we want to give us quotes. We can go out to whoever we want, say, "I need you to submit a quote." Of course, they need to be able, need to be vendors or contractors that supply that. So, we can't go to a widget company and ask for, I don't know, flares, if they don't sell flares, just to get a quote. So, we monitor that. We review all the quotes, make sure that they're apples for apples. The department and section must contact at a minimum three vendors, and we talked about that earlier. It has to be a minimum. And there's many times that purchasing will help. We'll have a staff member come to us and say, "I need these. I don't know where to get them." Well, we, we have kind of a bank of places that we know do it, or we'll just do a search. We have consortiums with other procurement professionals or colleagues that we can tap into that can give us ideas. So, we'll help them along the way. And the caveat to this one is the purchases under $5,000. We just talked about that. They can direct select who they need to. Purchases under $50,000 do not need to be approved by council. And I want to emphasize it does not need to be approved. But in circumstances where there's matters of high community interest or potential controversy, the city manager, Mr. Clifton here, may decide that, hey, this is something we want to take to council. They'll probably want to see this. And so, we'll bring it to council, if it's high-profile, and he deems that we should. Formal. So, the formal solicitation process is a lot different. This is where we come more into those sealed bids and open competitive pricing, or open competitiveness. Solicitations must be advertised in a local newspaper, and they must be posted on a city website. So, right now, our city website, we have a third-party website, Planet Bids. And we post everything on Planet Bids, and it goes out to everybody. In the past, we had our own website, but it was tough to maintain. This one is really, it does a lot of automation for us to help us determine sometimes responsiveness. And we'll talk about responsiveness coming up. And a solicitation must be posted for a minimum of two weeks. So, depending on the complexity, if it's a simple thing, two weeks might be sufficient. But if it's a complex thing, like building Lone Tree Overpass, we'll want that out there for a while, and I believe we had it out for a month and a half, and we got some really good candidates. Solicitation must be fair and equitable to all public competition. So, we can't put into our solicitations anything that would make it unfair for somebody who provides that same good or service. So, we need to be really cognizant of not showing bias towards one vendor or certain group of vendors. We have to maintain that fair and equitableness. Expenditure must be budgeted or approved by the budget team. We know that sometimes things come up and it may not be budgeted, but our budget team is tasked with finding money to be able to provide this. It happens a lot during emergencies. Budget team works really hard to help us reach our goals and help our citizens. And then contract must be reviewed by our city attorney. And I want to emphasize, actually all contracts need to be reviewed by city attorney, not just the formal ones. If we have a contract and it's three thousand dollars, we're sending it to the city attorneys. They're the ones who review those and make sure everything's in the best interest of the city. And then the contract must come to you all, the council for approval, anything over fifty thousand. So let's talk a little bit about solicitation types. So in the formal process, we have multiple solicitation types that depending on the need, we'll utilize. And some of, I'm, I'm sure some of these you've heard before. IFB, invitation forbid. So an IFB is when the scope of the procurement is definitively defined. We know exactly what we want. We have the exact details of what we need to buy and all we need is a price. We just need price and availability. So it's definitively defined. So we put it out for a bid. The price is the determining factor. So the bids we get, the, the bids we get that come in, whoever's the lowest responsive responsible, again, we'll talk about responsive and responsible. The lowest is the one who win that bid. They, they have to be awarded that contract for that bid. And it's for things like materials, vehicles, fire trucks, equipment, real estate, construction, et cetera. Construction has different facets to it. So depending on the complexity of it and what we need, that might fall into another solicitation type. And that's where purchasing helps the end user or staff member determine the right vehicle for a solicitation and getting the right contractors on board to deliver a project for us. RFP, request for proposals. I think that's everybody's favorite. Everybody calls everything an RFP. And that's fun. So in an RFP, the scope of work is not definitively defined. We kind of know what we want, we want, know what it looks like, but we, this is kind of a new area. We're kind of looking for a contractor or vendor to give us examples, show us what's out there. And we review it and whatever is in the best interest of the city, we'll, we'll take a close look at. These are all determined by scoring. So price is a factor in this, but it's not the determining factor. Determining factors are also qualifications and experience or technical requirements. So we have a value of criteria in a solicitation that we evaluate their proposals. We evaluate their price, we evaluate their qualifications and experience and their technical ability. And we score them and the highest scoring is usually the one that we'll work with. There's some caveats. If we can't come to an agreement, we may move on. But for the most part, it's price, quality, qualifications, experience and/or technical experience. And these, and RFPs are generally used for things like consulting services. We talked about earlier and that, if we need an analysis or some research done. Maintenance, we talked about elevator maintenance, that kind of thing. We want to make sure who's working on our elevators know what they're doing. We don't want Billy Bob in there fiddling with the cables and it crashing to the ground. So we want to make sure we have the right firm or company doing the work for us. We need to know that it's good. Research analysis, I, I mentioned that already. Labor, hey, we, maybe we need a trail built. Tell us how you're going to build a trail out here for us. We have multiple companies in town that can build trails, but hey, give us a proposal. What do you propose to do out here on this wild land for us? So those kind of things are RFPs. RSOQs. I don't know if you've heard of those before, it's talked about enough. It's a, RSOQ stands for request for statement of qualifications and that's exactly what it is. All we're doing is asking vendors and bidders and firms to give us their qualifications and experience to provide this service. With a RSOQ, usually the scope is summarized because we need something, not sure what it is. Tell us your experience and what you think is the best approach to this. So they give us their qualifications and experience. We've been doing this for twenty years. This is what we think will work best for the city. Again, we evaluate those SOQs, they're called SOQs, that they submit. And the highest score is usually the one that we end up negotiating with. And the next bullet is price and scope of work is negotiated with the highest scoring firm, vendor or contractor. So we'll negotiate that final scope because remember, remember we summarized it in the solicitation. We didn't really know. So they're telling us, they're showing us, here's a scope of work. Then we're working with them to define it to better meet our needs. They gave us the best approach, let's work with them. And then this is more for professional services. I mentioned earlier, engineering, architect, those higher level, as well as alternative project delivery methods for construction. And this is where I said, construction has other avenues depending on what we want. So there's design, build, construction. Basically, we don't have anything set. We need somebody to design it and build it for us. Show us your qualifications and experience for doing this type of thing. That's exactly what we did with the Lone Tree Overpass. It was an RSOQ for design, build. Contractor and a designer team up and they say, this is what we think is best. We interviewed, or we evaluated, we even interviewed them and we picked the highest scoring. C Mar, construction manager at risk. So what we want to do is we want to be a contractor in, when the plans are most of the way done, usually around sixty percent. And then have that contractor work with the design professional to finish off those plans because there is a difference between designing something and actually building it. The contractor may say, you know, I work on this all day long. You have this here, but I don't think that's going to work. Or they might say, or a design professional might say, you know, let's go ahead and do this. And the contractor and them collaborate back and forth to finish off their design. And then that contractor delivers it. So we want to make sure whoever we're having work with our design professional knows what they're doing, has experience doing this. And this is usually, we use this a lot for our roadway projects, for water services, for installing water lines and sewer lines. We want to make sure that the contractor has experience putting that in there because we don't want a geyser a, a month from, after they're done in the street. So show us that you've done this before. We need to know that you're a good fit for us. Let's talk a little bit about terminology now. Some things I've thrown around earlier and I said I'll get to, well, I'm getting to it. Responsive. Responsive is when a vendor submits for a solicitation that conforms in all material aspects to the solicitation. We say, submit your, your proposal and your proposal must have this or this or your RSOQ. You must have a certification in this included in your proposal. If they don't have it in there, they're non-responsive. They have to give us everything we're asking for in that solicitation. If they do not, they're non-responsive. They didn't respond to our needs. Responsibility or responsible, that's that second sister to responsive, responsible bidder, proposer. That's when a vendor, a vendor submitting a solicitation that has the capability, skills and experience to perform the contract requirements we're looking for. And the integrity and reliability assuring that in good faith performance. So we don't want to hire somebody who is in the middle of filing bankruptcy. We don't want to hire somebody who is in three lawsuits with other municipalities. We want to make sure that they're responsible for supplying us. And it goes both ways. If we've worked with a, a contractor for years, say eight years, and every project they worked on, they were phenomenal. I mean, that speaks to the responsibility and they were on time and on budget, no change orders. That's great. And then solicitation, I threw that around. I think we know what a solicitation is, but a solicitation is a request by the city from purchasing on behalf of our staff that invites vendors or firms or contracts, contractors to participate in a procurement. So some exceptions to those solicitation types. We have a few of them that we utilize. Sole source procurement. This is when a vendor is the only vendor that can supply this item. For example, our Caterpillar equipment. Caterpillar only allows one distributor to sell in Arizona the parts needed for their equipment. So we have to buy it from that company. I believe it's Empire. So we have a bunch of Caterpillar. They don't want any offshoot brand pieces that somebody might make in their, I don't know, garage because then it voids our warranty with them for one thing, but it may not be compatible. So we can only get these from Empire for the Caterpillar. That's a sole source. Proprietary procurement, that's when the vendor holds a copyright, a copyright, registered trademark, intellectual property rights to it. Some examples, our software or chemicals. So our software, say, we, we have a enterprise system that manages our financials. And if we need to get a module for it to expand our capabilities, well, we can only buy it from that vendor, from that software company because that's their software and they're the ones who sell that. We can't buy it from somewhere else because it won't be compatible with our system or the servers. So that's more of an intellectual property, but that's proprietary. And in chemicals, our water treatment plant uses a lot of different chemicals for treating our, our water. And they've worked with a lot of chemical companies to develop specific formulas needed for our specific water so that we have high quality water for our citizens. So those chemicals are formulated by this company. They hold the formula, the rights to that formula. We have to buy it from them. Emergency procurement, this happens, seems like more often during the summer. Emergency procurement is when there's a threat to the public health, safety and welfare or if a situation exists which makes compliance with the procurement process contrary to the public's best interest. And it may not be an immediate threat to health, but for example, we know what's going to flood coming up in the upcoming season. We've identified an area that would be a perfect place to put some water retention ponds. But we don't have the time to go through a solicitation process to get a contractor on board and then build it before monsoons hit. Say it's May and the solicitation process for a C Mar or design builder can take up to eight months. We've missed it. By that time, people are flooding out. We may do an emergency because it's contrary to the public's best interest. So we want to get those built. We want to head off those floods before they happen. That's another emergency situation. In all three of these situations, there, there's a required justification form. So purchasing has a form that our end users or staff uses to complete, telling us why it's an emergency, why it's a proprietary, why it's a sole source. Purchasing does our due diligence. We research it to ensure that it is. They say, hey, we can only get this from Empire. Okay, we'll, we'll just make a few phone calls. We'll call Caterpillar and they'll say, yeah, you could only buy it from them. Okay, we've done our due diligence. We just need to ensure that this truly is a sole source or a proprietary or an emergency. Okay. Some more exceptions. You may be familiar with this one. Cooperative procurements. What is a cooperative procurement? Well, it's when an end user, our staff member identifies a specific need through their research or they have a time sensitive need. Hey, we got to get these swing sets before school lets out so they have someplace to play. So, okay, there's a cooperative out there that has swing sets on it. We can buy the swing sets from this vendor. So this is for procuring materials, commodities or services from another agency's contract. So if an agency has the contract, we can piggyback off of it. And believe it or not, that is actually a procurement term, piggyback. All this technical stuff and they say piggyback. So the cooperative agency, and the reason we can do that is because the cooperative, cooperative agency has already performed the public procurement process. So these are government agencies. This isn't just like ABC Company, an LLC down the street or something. These are other agencies who have done the public procurement process, satisfied that public procurement process. And some purchasing staff, again, will do our due diligence to confirm that it satisfies our procurement process. So was it open, sealed, fair, that kind of thing? We review it to ensure that it does indeed fit the public procurement process. The cooperative agency contract must be current, so it can't be expired. Don't come to us with a cooperative and say, yeah, you can use this, but it expired three years ago. Must be current and it must be for the same or similar items of scope. So we couldn't buy a police car off of the swing set contract, of course. So we need to ensure that whatever that cooperative contract is, that that contract is for the services or materials or goods that they're wanting to buy. We ensure that, that's in the scope of work of that agency's contract. And then so the cooperative purchase, procurements, it reduces the processing time for procurement. And it really increases efficiency, not only for us, but for all of staff. So staff is able to provide their programs, provide their production to citizens in a more timely manner. If there's one out there and it makes sense to do so, yeah, let's do it. That way we get this done and we provide this service quickly to our citizens. I want to give you a couple of, a few examples of cooperatives. Some of them you may know, some of them you may not. So cooperatives under fifty thousand dollars, you probably don't know about these because it's under the threshold, right? Mail meter equipment. We just purchased some mail metering equipment for our copy center. They needed that in order to be productive for staff. Staff has needs, they have that mailroom, they need things done and they need them quickly. Well, having the right equipment helps them provide that service to the staff. And it trickles down, staff is more efficient. Reel to flag appraisal services. We all know reel to flag. It's been around since, I think, before I was born. Reel to flag, the core is pretty tight and pretty stringent on us turning things around for them. So we have appraisal services for reel to flag that we found on a cooperative for thirty-six thousand dollars. We did a cooperative contract with that agency's contract and we're able to provide those appraisals quickly. And then IT advisory, assessment, verification, valid, valid, easy for me to not say. Validation services for forty-seven thousand dollars. Our IT people need this software. It helps with their security, helps them with their business so that they can provide sound communications within the city. So that was forty-seven thousand. You haven't seen those. So these next ones over fifty thousand dollars, you notice it's over the threshold. These ones you have seen. These ones came to council. And my favorite, the first one up is ortho imagery and lighter. We all remember ortho imagery, right? All right. That was purchased on a cooperative contract for seventy-five thousand dollars. And it came to council February seventh, twenty twenty-three. We also bought twelve advanced defibrillators for four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars on a cooperative contract. That came to council September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And then finally, another really good one is our aerial bucket quint or fire truck. I don't know why they don't just call it fire truck, but quint for one point nine million dollars. And that came to this council in January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. So those are just some examples of some of the things we're able to do with cooperative contracts. I want to throw just a few procurement stats at you. This is not an extensive list by any mean, but it's what I was able to put together quickly. I want to give you some procurement timeframe. I want to give you some procurement timeframes for some of these solicitations. So informal, those are the things under $50,000. Those are quoted or direct select. And that can take one to three weeks. It's a pretty quick process getting quotes or direct selecting, if you will. IFBs, they take about three months. It's a good solid three months, developing the solicitation documents, getting them posted, getting them in, reviewed, and then taking them to council if we need to take them to council for approval. Those take about three months and it's because it's definitively defined. We know what we want. There's nothing to evaluate. So it's a pretty quick process. RFPs and RSQs, we talked about those. Those take three to eight months and I've seen them go longer, 11 months. Those are those that are more complex, those that we have to evaluate, that we have to make absolutely sure that we're hiring the right vendor or contractor to provide the goods or services that best meets the city's needs at a good price. So those can take anywhere from three to eight months. That's the evaluation. That's solicitation. You heard me say earlier where Lone Tree Overpass, we posted it for a month and a half on the street. So there's a month and a half of it. And then the evaluation process could take anywhere from a month to two months. So we have a team of evaluators, usually five to seven people. They all evaluate. We summarize the evaluation. We talk about it, the results, and then we discuss whether or not we want to interview. And this is another process, part of the evaluation. If we feel there's top candidates, top three candidates, we'll invite those three candidates for an interview. We'll ask more detailed, direct questions, frank questions with them because we just want to make sure they can do it. Plus, it could, all three of those, if they're high-scoring and are really close, all three of them can do it. So which one, right? So we want to do an interview process just to make sure that we're getting the right one. So those, that, the evaluation process can take some time to do. Cooperatives, those can take anywhere from a week to two months. And say a week because we may, we may have to buy some park benches for $10,000. They're definitively defined or benches. We found the benches we want, it's on a cooperative. We do a purchase order for it and they deliver it. It takes about a week. Up to two months could be, we're researching cooperatives that can do it, but there's also some council time in here, too. So we need to take those over 50,000 to council. So to bring it to council, we have to have it, a contract ready in place and decided on a cooperative two and a half weeks out from council. So that's half a month right there. So it, it could take a little time for cooperatives, up to two months. But still, that's a very short turnaround comparative to the RSQ or RFP processes. And then a few more little stats here. In fiscal year '22, that's 2021, 2022, purchasing solicited for 153 contracts. And keep in mind, those 153 contracts are an accumulation of informal, informal, IFBs, RFPs, RSQs, and all those take a lot of time. Some of those take a lot of time. Those RFPs and RSQs take a lot of time to do. So 153 contracts are a lot. And we have kind of a small staff for our procurement department, if you will. As a matter of fact, first half of this year, we were down almost half and we were working on a skeleton crew. So that leads me into fiscal year '23 of this year. I was just saying about half that year, we were down about half staff. So currently, as of the end of March, we've solicited or were in the process of soliciting 103 contracts. And I say that because some of those may still be in the process. We may be evaluating some RSQs. We may be looking at some cooperatives, that kind of thing, but they're not completed yet. The 2022, those are completed. I can say we've done those. But the '23, some of those are still in progress. Given what we've seen over the years, we anticipate an approximate 38 more before the end of the fiscal year, which is 161, which is the highest that we've ever had for procurement. And I know there's a myriad of reasons out there, like getting a bunch of new grants. Anytime we spend money, it's got to go through procurement to spend the money. So if we're buying something, we're handling it. And then along with all these contracts, and I mentioned earlier that all contracts go through our legal department. I want to take a moment to shout out to Christine, Christina Kinnear. She is our assigned lawyer and she works closely with us and she has been instrumental in helping us get these contracts out in a timely manner or as timely as we can possibly get it. So she's, she's our quasi-buyer. We're very thankful to have her, her to work with. Okay. So some things coming up, some cool things coming up that you'll see coming down the pipe or on the horizon. Charter revisions. So the city, city staff are working on some charter revisions. So it's not just procurement, but procurement is working on revisions to Article 8. You heard Emily mention Article 8 earlier and that's, Article 8 is contracts and that's everything purchasing. We're going to be updating some terminology and, for example, in there it says bids. One of the articles said bids. And given the language bids, it would refer to us sending out a hard bid and just getting a price for everything. Well, when the charter was originally drafted way back in the early days, bids were the only thing that they had for soliciting. Since then, we now have RFPs, we now have RSQs. And so we want to change some of that terminology to solicitations to cover us for any type of solicitation we may need to do. And then we're looking at the threshold down there and you'll see that coming up. We want to move that up a little bit to try help with efficiency and getting procurements completed in a more timely fashion or actually a quicker fashion. And, and that's important, especially with construction, because you know, in, in Flagstaff, there's two seasons. There's winter and there's construction. So we have a finite period of time to deliver a construction project. So some of those construction projects are below a certain dollar amount. If we can turn and burn those, those would be great. Those will be coming to you, to council, I believe in early May of 2023 for consideration for the upcoming November election. And then the other things we're working on is some procurement code manual revisions. We talked a little bit about procurement code manual earlier and the, some of the things that are in there, thresholds, that type of thing. But we're working on the procurement code manual because it needs a facelift as well. We need to change some things in there. For example, and I don't know if it's in Articles 1 through 7, currently we're working on 1 through 7. There's 31 articles, so we're going to see you a few times, I think. But for example, we have in there solicitations shall be a hard bid situation where people submit hard bids. It's paper. We've had stacks of proposals before. Now we do an electronic version where it's all electronic. There's no need for paper, no need for somebody to drive up here and drop off their solicita, or their proposal. So we need to change that language in there to something more electronic or a different fashion. But currently, we're working on 1 through 7 and I'm working, again, with Christina. She and I are going over things, redlining, re-redlining, and coming to an agreement on most things. But we'll have those to you here very soon after May. We're hoping to bring 1 through 7 to you before council's break this summer. So with that, are there any questions? Did I just bombard you with information or?
Thank you, Patrick.
You're very welcome.
I'm sure there are lots of questions. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Patrick, you know, on your organizational chart, several, you have one opening that's not filled and a couple of people are new. How are you handling the inflow of requests and, you know, managing through that? It seems like you have a very small team for all the things that we do.
Councilmember Matthews, I'm glad you asked that because personally, I, I think we're waning on it. I think our service level has dropped from what it should be and it doesn't sit well with me. I, I have heartburn over that sometimes, but we're behind, we're behind on some procurements. I'm hoping that once we get a, a purchasing manager on board, so the purchasing manager handles some of those higher-level procurements, that we can start getting some things turned around.
Bless you.
Getting some of those turned around, but quite frankly, I, I wish it were better. Yes.
I can only imagine. You guys are working as hard as you can.
I pulled out all my hair.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, thank you, Patrick, so much for this presentation. Thanks to your entire team, small and mighty. Do you, is your, is your, minus the, the missing team member that you have a slot for, is your team large enough for the job you have to do or do you feel like?
Right now, no, no. And I want to get fully staffed so I can then get a gauge to determine whether or not I really do need more staff. I think we might, but I can't, I can't tell because we, we were down three staff for the first part of this fiscal year and a lot happens in six months. We just brought on board Adriana and we just brought on board Teddy and they're not completely up to speed yet. We got to get them up to speed. So right now, the higher-level formal solicitations are being handled by myself and Emily. And I really worry about burning her out on most days. I'm constantly asking her how her stress level is and she just twitches at me. I, I.
Well, I thank you. I want to thank your whole team. We understand your short staff to, we, we know that that's a common story here. Not only in, throughout all departments here at the city, but it seems to be a sign of the times generally around the country in every sector. And so thank you so much for all the extra burden and the stress that comes with that and, and dealing with that situation. I do have a couple of questions for you that are generally themed around the evaluation process. I, you know, I, I do have questions and I know folks in the public have questions about exactly how you put your, you know, it's kind of like nailing Jell-O to the wall, but what is the, I mean, how do you evaluate proposals? You know, just a couple of specific questions. The, the public confidential aspect of this, you know, the, how, how does the evaluation process differ depending on the particular procurement process? We all know that everything is an RFP, but when it's not an RFP, how is that, how is that different in terms of evaluation? And just drilling down in on that a little bit. You know, we had a very spirited, maybe even contentious issue come up a few weeks ago regarding our banking partner. And there's, there's a lot of, I, I think there's a lot to work through there still publicly transparency-wise. And part of it, part of it comes to exactly how these evaluations are done. And, you know, having invoked that, maybe you can just speak openly for a few minutes to assuage our concerns around that transparency issue and, and the, the flexibility and the discretion that is involved by your team in that process.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I think I absorbed all that. So there are different things we do for different solicitations or different procurements. Let's start with that banking one, if you will. I know that was a cooperative. Again, purchasing staff reviewed the agency's contract and reviewed their procurement process. And they went through the formal procurement process, they did an evaluation, and they did the public procurement process above board the way it's supposed to. So in that instance, we reviewed that, we felt that it was accurate and we moved on with a cooperative contract. So this city has a cooperative contract that we use based off of that contract. And so basically, it covers some of the things that we want in place for the city, just a few thirds of, like, two pages. But it basically says it references the agency's contract in all ways as well as their solicitation process. So we evaluate what they've done to get that contract that we're utilizing. An evaluation process in-house for us for RSQ and RFP are pretty similar. So we'll get, we'll develop a team and a evaluation committee of five to seven members. And I personally, and I put it out there to staff, that I prefer also to have at least one of the evaluation committee members to be outside of the city. And I do that so that it doesn't look like, oh, the city, of course, they hired this person, they decided before they evaluated. So I like to have one, we've had up to three or four people from outside of the city on an evaluation committee and it just looks better that we have outside looking at it as well. In certain circum, oh, and all evaluators have to have some experience and/or knowledge of the subject matter. So we're not going to have like our librarian, no disrespect to our librarian, if she's still here. We wouldn't have her evaluate a C Mar RSQ because she doesn't know anything about construction and vice versa. I wouldn't have a project manager evaluate a book service for the library. So we make sure that whoever's on the evaluation committee have experience with that subject matter. The way we evaluate it, it goes out anonymously. We assign numbers to each evaluator and we send it out, blind copied to everybody so they don't see each other. And they do an independent evaluation and submit it back to the buyer, not to the group. So it just comes right back to us. Prior to doing so, that confidentiality, we have them sign a confidentiality form stating that they are not associated with any of the conflict, confidentiality and non-conflict form. I forgot the second part of that form. So they tell us that, no, we're not associated with these groups. We don't have family members. They're not my neighbor, that kind of thing. So we make sure that there's no bias there, that they're not going to evaluate for their buddy, if you will. And in confidentiality, part of it is while you're going through this process, you cannot talk to anybody about it other than the evaluation team when we, when we meet. So they're not allowed to talk to their neighbor, they can't talk to people they work with because we don't want that outside influence on it. It needs to be an independent evaluation. And then once I receive their evaluations back or once we receive it back, all of them back, we summarize it. So we tally up all the scores, including the comments that they may have, and we tell them, keep your comments pertinent to the subject matter and the evaluation. Please don't include any personal feelings in it because you're evaluating based on their proposal or SOQ, not if Jim the other day put his garbage can in front of your driveway and it really made you mad and so you're going to give him a low score. Keep it pursuant to their proposal of SOQ. Then the team will get back together to look at the scores. We look at the highest scores, we talk about things. If there's.
Can you speak to the evaluation criteria a little bit?
It's different for.
I'm sure it's contextual, but.
I'll, I'll just give you an example. So one would be a qualifications experience of your team, of your company, of each member of your team. So because team members go in and out, while this company may have, you know, 10 years of experience, they might have just went through a big staff change and all the staff that's on there, except for one, are green and they don't know what they're do, or they haven't had the experience that the others have. So we want to make sure that all the experience is there and the qualifications are there. And then we ask for their project or program approach. Tell us how you see this working. Tell us your approach, how will you handle this? We, we may ask for schedules. Give us a schedule, a timeline of what you think it will take to provide this service to the city of Flagstaff. Provide us your certifications. Provide us your contractor rating, that kind of, your insurance rate. We can ask for all of those and we evaluate them. In an RSQ, we can't ask for pricing because it's just qualifications and experience, but in an RSQ, we can tell them what our estimated budget. and experience. But in an RSOQ, we can tell them what our estimated budget would be for this program, because it's an estimated. And the reason we do that is so that, when you have professionals out there that want to submit a, an SOQ, they may see that and say, you know what, I can't do that for that dollar amount. I'm not going to submit. Otherwise, they might submit, everybody takes the time to do this, just to find out that we don't have enough money to hire them to do it. So, we'll evaluate them on it. We'll add in their estimated, our estimated budget to see.
Do you have, and I know you were already following a different thread. I don't want to get too far away from that. I interrupted you to ask that question, but here's another question insert, with regard to criteria. You mentioned a lot of things that are, you know, about the quality of the product or the skill set. Are there other intangibles that you measure, like, community standing, or local, or, you know, just, just things that maybe you can't quite put your finger on? I know Sterling's smiling over there, because this is where things get a little bit more esoteric, right?
Right.
But I guess my question, it's still pretty open-ended. How do you account for those intangibles that may provide quality and value to the community and a better product, but it's not really something that, you know, you see on the tape measure, or?
Right.
In, on a resume about years of experience, et cetera?
Good question. What we do is, to help weed out those type of things, is we have an evaluation criteria, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up, but it's an important one, actually. It's called value-added knowledge and experience, right? And it's a criteria, it's one of the only evaluation criteria that council had reviewed and approved to be in our solicitation documents. So, basically, the value-added knowledge and experience is asking them, tell us about your experience working in Flagstaff, or a region similar to Flagstaff. Tell us about the work you've done. Tell us how you're going to be available to staff, if we call. So, we look for that value in, how have you, how have you done work in a similar situation, if you will. Flagstaff is a unique geological area. We don't want somebody who's down, who does work primarily down in Tucson in the sand, coming up here to the rock shelf, thinking that they can provide the service. We want to know that they have experience in Flagstaff or a similar region. And that's about as close as we can get to that.
Patrick, you were, you were talking when I interrupted you with my question a few minutes ago. I don't know if you remember the thread you were on, but feel free to go back to it.
I do not.
Staff review the scores and talking about the scores.
Oh, thank you. I've got good backup today. So, going back to what we were talking about, we're evaluating, I get, we get the scores, we summarize those scores, then we meet as an evaluation team. We talk about those scores. And sometimes, in those scores, there may be a big delta, if you will. So, one evaluator, let's say the evaluate, evaluative criteria is 50 points. I'm just throwing that out. And one evaluator evaluates this firm at 20 points. Everybody else evaluates them at 45 to 50. There's a big delta there. So, we'll talk about that, because sometimes what happens is, somebody didn't read something in there that the other ones did, or somebody did read something that the other ones didn't. And we talk about, about it overall as an evaluation. We don't hammer on the person, you need to change this or anything. We just, okay, what do we see in here? What could be the difference? And we talk about that. And then, at the end of it, we give the opportunity for anybody who wants to revise their score in a certain criteria, based on the conversation we had. And it has to be anonymous. It's not, hey, yeah, Patrick, change this to a six. It's like, you have it to me by noon tomorrow, kind of thing. And the person who did a 20, scored a 20, listens, you know what, I didn't see that. I guess I just read through it really quick. I'm seeing it now. And he wants to revise the score, and he revises it to 40, if you will. But he just sends it to me. I revise the evaluation scoring, and I send it back out to the team. I say, okay, or we do. The highest-scoring firms, we always look at the top three, because that's what we say in our solicitation. Top three-scoring firms are 1, 2, 3 Company, ABC, and Widgets America. And the delta, so there's two different ways. The deltas between them might be great enough that the team feels, just to move forward with the highest score. They may be so close that usually, procurement will say, you know, because of these deltas are so close in the evaluation scores, we highly advise that we go to interview. Remember, I was talking about interviews earlier, when they, we don't know that they can't do it. So, we do an interview, and we score those interviews. We come up with a list of questions that are burning on the committee's mind, because, you know, you read it, and you talk, and then things pop up, and like, you know, I do want to know about this. I do want to know about that. So, we put together a list of questions for them to review and to bring to us in a presentation format, and then we ask more questions. So, then we evaluate that interview. And then, what we do is, we combine the total score of that evaluation with their total score of the written proposal or SOQ, for a total score at the bottom, and then we go with the highest scoring. And usually, what that means is, we move to start negotiating with that highest scoring. So, in a proposal situation, we'll negotiate with them and ask for a best and final, because the price is a factor, and they can adjust their proposal a little bit and adjust their pricing. In an RSOQ situation, we'll negotiate for a final scope and price. And I, if you remember, I talked about that earlier. In RSOQ, we start negotiating the final scope and the final price. Or, what you may be familiar with in the construction arena is a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price. So, those come to you routinely for a lot of the construction. So, that's what we'll do. We'll negotiate the scope with the contractor, and then we'll negotiate the GMP with them, to get it dialed in to a reasonable amount between the contractor and the city. And then, it goes further. If we cannot come to an agreement with that top score, we will formally break negotiations with that contractor, and we'll move to the next highest scoring. And so on down the line, until we've exhausted all three. If we just can't come to, we'll resolicite it. So, I hope that helps.
I have a question bouncing off of that.
Sure.
I'm guessing that in those interviews, the questions that you ask can't be anything that is not already asked in the RFP or RSOQ, like, it can't be completely off that topic.
Mayor, we can ask for them to expand on their response in the proposal or RSOQ. We could say, you know, we like what you said, but we, we're just wanting more information about this. Please expand on this and give us a little more detail about it.
Okay. And I took some notes, and.
Mayor, if I may, Patrick, could you clarify, do you ask new questions in those meetings?
We do. So, we do ask new questions, and I don't know if that's what you were looking for, but we do ask new questions, because a lot of times, there may still be some burning questions afterwards with the evaluation committee. Well, I still, I'd just like to know this. Okay, let's ask that of them. And so, we'll send them those questions. We'll get a list of questions. They'll be given to me, and I will send that off to the contractors, for, to all the contractors we're interviewing, not just one, to give us some more information on these questions.
That was the key. All contractors get the new questions. It's not just one.
Right.
But it can be a question that's not covered in the RFP that you put out.
Correct. It can be a question that was not in the solicitation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I have all kinds of arrows drawn on this, so please help me be articulate on this question.
Sure.
How is RFP, RSOQ language created or dictated? Like, I get, I'm guessing that state statute is the primary authority, and then other authority would come from our own code, or?
Right. So, if you're looking for a hierarchy, it would be state statute, charter, procurement code.
Okay. And, okay. So, one question that, that I've asked repeatedly throughout the years, and, and it's probably the most asked question that I get, is, why can't we award extra points to locally-owned businesses in this kind of process?
In a nutshell, if we did that, that would show, that would provide an unfair, unequitable process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And, so, say the, the city has declared, like, we've declared a climate emergency and a housing emergency. Is, can we include any of our goals toward these in an RFP or an RSOQ? And I'm, like, like, could we ask, do you, does your company, I'm trying to think of something, like, I don't know, do you use all-electric vehicles or something? I'm just, you know, something that's contained within our already-stated goals in some plan that we have.
I don't know that we can ask that direct question, as it would pertain to whether or not we award a contract to them. But in the scope of work, we can identify that the city is sustainable. We have this. We also strive for this. So, that the submitters of the proposals or SOQs read that, and they can add that into whatever they're doing as something that would be, I don't know, advantageous to the city.
But we couldn't disqualify someone who didn't address that?
No.
Because we can't ask specifically?
Right.
We're only looking for companies that drive all-electric vehicles, or whatever?
Right. That, that would show a bias, and it would.
Okay.
It would create an unfair solicitation process.
And that is laid out in state statute?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Thank you so much, staff, all of you, for putting this together.
Thank you for your time. It was a pleasure.
Was it?
It was. I actually always want to talk to you about procurement. I love this stuff, so I'm a nerd.
So, the Stacys, there originally had been a request to delay the next item. Are we ready to go?
Yes, Mayor, we are, and we would prefer, if we could, go ahead and get started with that one, just due to some scheduling.
Great.
Thank you.
So, moving along to item number 12, Agassiz Peak renaming process. Receive input from the council on the name change proposal for Agassiz Peak, currently being considered by the Arizona Board on Geographic and Historical Names.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Sarah Langley. I am your Public Affairs Director. I'm actually going to kick it over to Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Darryl Marks. He has another obligation that he needs to get to, so we'd like for him to have a chance to speak before he has to leave. Thank you.
Good evening, greetings. So, I'm sure that, from what I heard, that you've already heard from the National Board on Geographic Names, which is great. A few years back, I think early 2020, before all the closures and everything happened, youth at Flagstaff High School came together to do a workshop on press releases, and what does that look like? The topic they chose was looking at San Francisco Peaks and the names that it holds. Some of the things that they started to understand in their research was that some of the names that are up on the mountain right now are inappropriate and don't align with their cultural context and the things that they've learned growing up. An example that was given, some of our Native American, our Navajo students had said that, growing up, we were taught by our elders that this mountain is called Toko Osli. It wasn't until we came to either live or go to school here in Flagstaff, that people were calling it a different name, San Francisco Peaks. And in the process of identifying each of the individual peak names that are up there, they came across the name Agassiz. And in their research of Agassiz, they found that what he's known for prominently isn't quite appropriate to our communities of color, and certainly not for those of the Native American students that were participating in this workshop. And so, they began the process of identifying, how do we, as young people, advocate for that name to be changed? They held a press conference. Vice Mayor Whalen, at the time, came and was present, along with some media, and they shared their presentation with her. She then said, well, I, as city, we can't really make any changes with the mountain directly, because of that being county forest land, and it might go through, have to go through a federal process. But we can definitely work on changing some of the names here in Flagstaff, which led to a public process. They got to change the name of Agassiz Street to what it is now. And that gave the students an opportunity to not only reflect that, something that they've all been meaning to ask, something that their parents and their grandparents were all wondering, why this mountain would hold such a name. And that began the process of doing more research, going out to the communities and asking more questions. We were fortunate enough, through some of the press releases that went out, some of the articles that were written, that the youth were put in contact with the actual Agassiz descendants. They were able to come to Flagstaff, meet with the youth, and all said that they didn't think it was appropriate that their family's name be on the mountain because of the history of Louis Agassiz. They're in the process of, in a, they're in a lawsuit process with Harvard University, trying to remove his name from the university. And so, they sent a letter of support. That's in the information that Makaias and Michellea will share with you. Makaias and Michellea have kind of been the spearhead youth in this effort. One of the things that I want to say in close, without taking too much time from them, is that they were just coming out of high school when they started this process. They're getting ready to graduate from university. I recognize that it's a slow-moving process. I want them to feel that we're listening, as the adults, the parents, that generation. The paperwork was filed with the US Geographic Board, and we're hopeful that city will support the youth as the board comes to Flagstaff and asks more questions about who feels that this should change. Now, during the press release, some of the youth recognized that the majority of them were Navajo, but they also knew that Navajo community doesn't necessarily have specific names for all of the peaks, and if they do, much of that is being lost to the generations. They do recognize their Hopi relatives have a name for that particular peak, which we call Agassiz from Flagstaff, and that mountain is Omaki, and that's what was presented and submitted in the paperwork. And you'll hear from Michellea what that name main, what that name means, and why that's of importance to not just Hopi people, Native American people, but all of Flagstaff. With that, I pass it on to Michellea, who I hope is ready to go online, and she'll share a little bit of the PowerPoint. And Makaias is here to answer some questions for any and all.
Thank you.
Okay, let me share my phone.
Michellea, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me? Oops.
Yes, we can. Do you have a camera, by chance? Terrific.
Oh. Okay, there, I have a camera. Sorry, I just came straight from campus. Let's see, I'm trying to figure out how to share.
Mikael, it's up on the top right side, next to the leave button.
Okay, can you see it? Okay, are you able to see it?
Yes.
Okay. I think it'll work better if I turn on my camera, because my internet's kind of iffy. But I'd like to say hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Michellea So. I am currently a student at the University of Arizona, so that's why I'm not there in person. I'm not, I just wanted to announce that I'm not one of the original people that has started advocating for the restoring of the name. In the past years, I've gone out of my way to go into the community and collect stories from Native elders, youth, and supporters. So I've been doing, that's my part in all of this. I also like to share some background information about Agassiz Peaks, and that's why, and why we are advocating to rename Agassiz Peak. So, this is... Okay, so this is a kind of a map of where geologically where Agassiz Peak is. And then above, on the bottom is like the names that all of the other indigenous tribes, what they call this. Behind Agassiz Peaks, as you know, it was named after a figure who legitimized racist beliefs of white superiority and why we are trying to get the name changed. And so, a little more background information is that at a lecture at a club in South Carolina, Agassiz had announced that African Americans constituted a separate species, not meaning that they're human, and that the relations between blacks and whites were immoral and destructive to social equality. Had gone and done, based off of the, from what I've saw on Coconino Forest Services website, Agassiz Peak was named in 1867 after the famous zoologist Louis Agassiz, who made a fossil study. And you can find this on their website, so this is where I had got it from. This is an issue for indigenous communities, because he legitimized racist beliefs of superiority. So keeping the name Agassiz Peak deeply affects indigenous communities, because these indigenous communities, as us, associate the sacred mountain as with spiritual deities, ancestors, emergent ceremonies, climate conduit, and still integral to today's daily practices. So that's the reason why I had tied in not only stories from my own family, but as well as going into other tribal communities, such as Hopes, and getting their, their own personal connection as to what this, what the mountain means to them and what they were taught. These are the sacred names. And of all the 13 indigenous tribes that considered San Francisco Peaks as a sacred peak. And then these are just some of the quotes that I had gotten from elders. And this doesn't sum up all the stories that I've heard. And it's kind of hard to translate Navajo into English, because in Navajo, it means a lot more. And then also in Hopi, where I would go into communities and they would tell me, it was kind of hard for the translator to get the meaning to me. But when Hopi or their Navajo language, it means so much more. So it was, there's kind of that barrier. But you can tell from the stories that they share, it means so much to them. So this, that was my part of trying to bring people's stories and showing that, how much this mountain means to them. And then not also, oh, then not also only from elderly, but also from youth, because they're the ones who are going to be continuing all these traditions and ceremonies and prayers. And I wanted to, we wanted to integrate that into why we are doing this, because we're not only doing this for them, we're doing it for elders, our ancestors, and the people that come after us. And then this is some of the press release that Mr. Marks had talked about. And so I just wanted to share that as well. Credit, as beginning, I said that I wasn't the one who started this. So we're just kind of continuing to grow from that and trying to get this to go into changing the name. My closing statement. Agassiz science was used to try to legitimize racist beliefs of white racial superiority, therefore naming a peak after him is inappropriate and antagonizes the beliefs and acknowledgements of indigenous nations and other communities of color. This creates a culture of racism and colonization that we deem as unacceptable. So this is the reason why we are trying to get this, because, to get the name changed, because it doesn't align with who we are as indigenous communities and also as people who live in Flagstaff.
Thank you. And would, do you have something to add to that? Or are you here strictly for questions?
I am here at whatever capacity that is required of me. So if you have questions or comments or just want to have a conversation about it, this is the space to have it right now.
Excuse me, one moment. So Sarah, you also have a presentation, is that correct?
I just wanted to note that Rose Tohe, our Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives, was not able to be here tonight, because she's actually traveling for work. She really wanted to make a comment on this, though, so we did record some remarks from her. If you'd like, I can play that now, and then we can take questions if that works.
Yes, please.
Great. All right, it's about a two-minute video, so.
Yad ek greetings, Mayor and Council. Those are my plans. My name is Rose Tohe. I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives, City of Flagstaff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I commend our youth, our local students, who have started this process through the State Naming Board. The council to weigh in. It is important to emphasize that the students have been in front of the Indigenous Commission here at the City of Flagstaff, and they provided a presentation. They asked for their support in this process, and the Indigenous Commission has voted in support of the name change. I also wish to share the following to provide a context for council and those listening. The sacred peaks, known as the San Francisco Peaks, are known to the Dinah people as Dokoslid, emphasizing the majestic view and the brilliance of the snow on top. To the Dinah people, the mountain is a female entity and represents the western boundary. She is a holy place for the Hopi, Navajo, Havasupai, Zuni, Apache, and other tribal nations in northern Arizona. She is associated with emergence, deities, ancestors, life-giving moisture, and ceremonies. The medicine people, our traditional practitioners, collect their much-needed items for their medicine bundles and the herbs for healing ceremonies. The sacred mountain are a source of healing and curing powers. As indigenous people, we continue to believe in the strength source that she gives, and our ceremonies continue to this day. This mountain, she represents love. For my beloved Flagstaff community members who understand the concept of being a good relative and embrace kinship, we can feel that sense of identity, respect for Dokoslid, love for the children of this land, and connection to a higher source of wisdom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. And I'll turn it back to you and the council and Makaias for your discussion. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So we'll take questions from council members, but we'll save discussion for after-public comment. All right? So Councilmember Matthews, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. And the first speaker covered it, but I just wanted to express, when this came first into conversation, I had questions or concerns about honoring all the tribes that we have in our area, and that was explained, I think, before. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I'm very thankful and encouraged to see our youth take an initiative. And it's got to feel really wonderful to see something that is so heartfelt coming to fruition. So I just wanted to make that comment and congratulate all of you.
Other questions? Well, questions? Okay. So I'm going to take some public comment, and then we will have council discussion. So first up is Adam Shimoney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, leadership, city staff, members of the public. Good to be here with you. I'm speaking today on behalf of myself, of course, and I just wanted to say a few things. You know, government bodies of all levels have systemically done harm over the generations. And efforts such as this are examples of that harm. Those harms can be big and small, right? Subtle, things that float under the radar, and other things are more blatant in your face. Names such as the Agassiz Peak are an example of this. Although we have normalized this act of aggression through this name, it's never too late to address a wrong. I know that the city is busy with many other topics of interest, but this topic does have momentum, and I support you all continuing with this momentum. I do find it worthwhile. I don't believe Louis Agassiz embodies the values of our city, nor our community. I'm grateful to those who have been working to elevate this discussion over the years, especially the youth, and want to place my support in you all taking some action this evening and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Fon Toya.
Good evening, Mayor Daggett, and council members of City of Flagstaff. Most of you know me as Commissioner Toya, and I also belong with the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff. But tonight, I am representing myself. I'm Hopi, and sorry, I might get a little emotional, but I have some comments to make. I serve here in many groups and work for the community every day as my job. And I wanted to let you all know that I did some homework, and I was able to have a discussion with tribal leader, village leader. And I want to just make some comments without kind of, you know, going too in-depth to what is very sacred to us in a spiritual way, and being respectful of my Hopi people. Agassiz Peak is Omaki, the cloudhouse. If you Google Agassiz Peak, you'll see that it has a quoted comment on there that it is in the Gatzina Peaks Wilderness on the Coconino National Forest. So with that being said, I want to respectfully ask that you consider the name change. And this is in support also to our youth. They're the ones that are going to lead us into the future. They are going to be the ones to carry on our cultural, religious ceremonies that we are thankfully lucky enough to continue as we were not able to for the past three years. And so once we've recently gotten that back, that is why I'm so emotional, because it takes a lot for someone like me to represent our people and stand in front of you to explain some of this. But I do thank you for your time, and I hope that, you know, this process is a calm process, a respectful process. And I just want to also let you all know that this is part of generational trauma. Hopes and Navajos, we've all both endured a lot in our journey, and that's even against each other's. But this request today proves that we can all come together as one, as stewards of this land. So that is what I want to tell you all tonight. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Fon. And if you'll stay there, please. Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
Well, briefly, thank you for your comments tonight. My question is, how do you pronounce the proposed name?
Omaki.
Thank you.
Yes. And, you know, I did talk to the, some of the Hopi tribal officers, too. So just know that they were consulted, and they know of this meeting tonight. And so that the Hopi tribe is aware. I let a few of the officers know. So just want to let you know that one of them did give a blessing to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question of staff, and I'm not sure that you'll be able to answer this. Seems like I ask a lot of questions where I say that I'm not sure you can answer this. So if we support this, what is the next step?
Thank you, Mayor. And it's actually a bit of a complex process, so I made some notes in case this question did come up. But so as some of the other speakers referenced, we did, or the mayor and council did receive an email from the Arizona State Board on Geographic and Historic Names. They have received the proposal from the Flagstaff youth. And so now they have a process that they follow. And currently, they are in the phase where they collect input from stakeholders throughout the community. They've also reached out to the Board of Supervisors, I know, and some other stakeholders in the community. So they're currently in that process. The next time they meet, after they've gathered all this feedback, they will then make their recommendation on if they support the name change or not. They did note that it could take several meetings for them to reach that recommendation. So, you know, we're not sure how long that process will take. If they do vote in support of a name change, there are kind of two separate processes that take place. And it sounds like Arizona is kind of a unique state for this. So the first is the state level. If the Arizona State Board on Geographic and Historic Names supports the name change, they send that to the Arizona Secretary of State, as well as the Coconino County Recorder. That name is then, the new name for the peak would then be used at the state level for all publications, such as maps, records, things like that. So they have the authority to change the name at the state level. They also send their recommendation to the, wrote down the name here, US Board on Geographic Names, which is the federal body. The federal body then conducts their own process. And they noted these could happen concurrently as well. And then that board has the power to make a name change at the federal level and change the name on federal documents. So kind of two processes that could occur separately, concurrently. But if you do support the students' proposal tonight, staff will draft a letter noting that support, send that to the Arizona Board, and then they will continue with their process. So I hope that helps a bit.
It does, thank you. And Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry. It's just a related question to that.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry, it's just a related question to that, because the, so, from my recollection, the email came to us as council, but was it soliciting a single message on behalf of this, or was it asking for each to speak as an individual stakeholder?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. I don't believe it specified, so you could probably take either route, whichever you preferred.
You.
That guy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. Councilmember House, it did not specify, but in some discussions internally and with the mayor, I believe it was decided that a collective input by the council would be the most powerful, and we did not want to wait until the end of the month to do that. Three of the council will be absent next week, so that is one of the reasons we kind of rushed to get this on the agenda tonight, but with your consent, we would draft that letter for the entirety of the council if that was the choosing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to just acknowledge City Manager Clifton for escalating this at our last Indigenous Commission, and thank you, Commissioner Toya, for being here and representing. I know that Rose Tohe was really disappointed not to be here, but it was of utmost urgency for us. And so, staff, Sarah, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but I brought it up before, because this has been a topic that we have discussed in the past, but in waiting for the state to make their ruling, whether they do or not, is it possible and appropriate for us to move forward in the cities referencing the different peaks, not waiting on their move, but in our marketing and advertising? Is that something that we could possibly consider?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I would probably defer to the city manager on his input on that. That might be at his decision-making.
Thank you, and thank you for the question, Councilmember. We're glad to look into that, and, you know, if there are no impediments to doing so, we will do so, if that is the direction of the council.
Thank you. Makaius, I have a question for you. Hello. So, it was stated that the Navajo Nation doesn't have a specific name for that specific peak, and that's how the Hopi name was chosen. How were other tribes brought into the discussion, or were they? And if they weren't, it sounds like there is a process when it goes through the state, so there's still additional process for the public to weigh in. I'd just kind of like to know that, and before you answer, I'd just like to thank you and your fellow students for all the work that you've put into getting to this place.
So, real quick, before I continue on to answer that question, I do this for me and the peoples I come from. Yat e, shee et, twan in the shlen, tapa ham, basis chink, achi, tashi che, aro, na kai de ne, dashinale, shee et, Makaius Markshinashen. So, real quick, I am near the water, born from Edro water. My mother's father is Red Bottoms People, and my father's father is the Peoples Coming Home. Name's Makaius Marksh, and I introduce myself that way, because that's how you introduce yourself in any space you come into, especially when we're coming to have this conversation at this capacity, because there is a long history here in Flagstaff, especially with Indigenous Peoples. Flagstaff wouldn't exist if Indigenous Peoples weren't here. A lot of us, a lot of the tribes, we laid down the foundational work so that this community could be built on top of it, and as we're having this conversation, we're going to be having that discussion with that kind of history, the history of genocide and assimilation. When it comes to having the conversation with all 14 tribes, the dialogue and the conversation varies different from the community to the governmental bodies. I know we, as the Nepeal people, and me personally, that my family and the students' families have had these conversations at a community level, and we've all come to the consensus that, of course, this mountain, its name needs to change, because this mountain doesn't represent who we are as a community, who we are as a people. We are here in the sacred southwest. And, of course, we have each an own idea of what that name should be, but it is not argued that the name needs to be changed, a name that reflects the community. And through discussion with each individual, not just a collective, not just government officials saying, "Oh, yeah, we speak for everybody," when everyone has a different idea and a different opinion, that Omaki is the name that will begin that discussion, saying, "This is the House of Clouds." Everyone here in Flagstaff, especially from a Western mindset, can see that these clouds come here all the time, bringing the rain that we need, bringing the snow that is a pain in the butt to shovel away, and the rain does make its presence known, especially here in Flagstaff after those wildfires. But right there, underneath that, underlining all of that, is us as Indigenous Peoples who have always lived here and will always be here. What is the name going to be? Is it going to be Omaki? I would love it, because I am Navajo. Yeah, it's not. I have family and relatives who are Hopi, and I understand the history between Navajo and Hopi. I know Navajo Nation's a huge nation, and it has a big, it takes a lot of space, especially when it walks into any room, because it's a big nation. But that's why I think it's going to be Omaki. It's going to be the Hopi name, because the Hopis have, at least from my family, always seen them stay true to who they are, to have that kind of discipline, and that's something that this community is going to need as we continue to go forward, as we're looking into the past, seeing the pain we've done, but as well as acknowledging the influences, the things that we brought here, so that we can create that better future. So, yeah, that conversation is going to be had, and I'm sure all of you will be participant to those discussions, because it's not just limited to Indigenous Peoples, but all communities of color, because we've all given something, the Asian, Pacific Islanders, the Black, African American, the Spanish-speaking, all of us have given piece of ourselves to this community, and we want that to be reflected in this mountain. So, it was intentional to lay that seed of Omaki, to not just have that discussion with the tribes, but with everybody, because this is our home.
Thank you. And you know that there's a city council election in 2024, right?
You flatter me, thank you.
Comments, questions? I think we're, I think we're ready to move forward, and I'd like to hear from council what your feelings are. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you calling on me. I was on council when we changed the name of Agassie Road, which went right in front of the downtown post office, and for the same reasons that I supported changing the name then, I support changing the name now. I would like to say that I am comfortable with the Hopi name, Omaki. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly. Pretty close.
Oh, you got it, you got it.
Thank you. And I strongly support a letter of support going to the appropriate parties. I guess my only remaining question is, I think I've seen the Omaki spelled a couple different ways, sometimes with hyphens and different punctuation, so I'm really not sure how that, and I think, Sarah, maybe you can kind of address that before the letter goes out. But anyway, in summary, I'm very supportive. I'm very supportive of using the Hopi name in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Omaki, and also Mashala, and to all the youth who inspired me on Indigenous Peoples' Day this past year to really think hard about this, and I think this came up originally as a two-from. For me, it was all based and predicated off of the work that you guys were doing, and the excitement and the inspiration that I received in my heart and prayerfully from your presentation and your very good discussion. I know we have a history of doing this already. I think those small steps were incredibly instrumental in moving us forward and helping to build momentum around this, and I hope it's obvious that my excitement for this change and moving forward with this is obvious. I do have a couple of thoughts to share. I'll try to be quick. You know, it's interesting, this isn't the first time that I've found myself involved in a name change regarding eugenicist. When I was a community organizer in inner-city Sacramento, I did a lot of work with churches, and I also did a lot of work with public schools and public small schools. And one of the schools that I was in and out of all the time, working with teachers and parents and students, was called Charles M. Gady Middle School, and it was in a predominantly African-American community on the south side of Sacramento. And the school administrator called me into the office one day. We had a nice rapport, we talked to each other a lot. She was African-American, almost everybody who worked there was, and she had just found out, and she was so upset, she went looking around to see who this guy was the school was named after, and he was a prominent and very rich eugenicist back in the 1920s. And he was personally responsible in spearheading of the involuntary sterilization of over 20,000 Black women in the state of California, and so she was absolutely just stricken with disgust. And because of my background as an organizer, I recognized an opportunity there, and we got to talking and knocking heads, and I don't think it was a year that went by before the name of Charles M. Gady was struck from the school board rosters. And the school, by a process that was led by the public, was renamed to Rosa Parks Middle School. It was one of the first schools to be named that, because Rosa Parks had just passed away, if my memory and timeline is correct on that. So, just an amazing process, and it's so weird to see the heated arguments on the side of keeping, of holding on to old names for places. I think every generation and every group should have the opportunity to change a name if they want to. We are on Indigenous land, and we shouldn't make the mistake of thinking that this is about a self-avowed eugenicist, although it also certainly is about that. You know, this peak could be named Liberty Bell Mountain, for all I care. We should still be having this conversation. So many things have been taken away from the Indigenous settlers of this region in the name of colonialism and expansion by one particular arbitrary group, and this sort of conversation is one that we should all jump on, because it's healing, and it creates a future together. It's the way forward. Whatever name we choose, we should at least embrace the conversation and the exploration of what we name our sacred spaces. One thing I do know, and I know it in my own way, I'm not trying to appropriate anything here, I find those peaks to be very sacred, and I can only imagine how instrumental and important they are as one of the four cardinal symbols of this land for the Peoples who originally settled here. And so, it's really important to keep that in mind and to honor that. You know, and just a couple more thoughts. I say this cheekily, Councilmember Matthews, but I didn't even think your question was necessary. I just assumed that we were all in here, and we would do whatever we can locally, as well as beyond, and I'm glad to hear you raise that question, because it's always necessary to ask the question, I'm finding, being up here in the dais. So, thank you for crossing those Ts and dotting those Is and making sure we're moving forward. And I want to bring this up, I, you know, I realize there's probably some sensitivities here that I'm stepping into, and my intent is not to stir feelings or anything, but, you know, I have an obligation here from the dais to speak truth to power and to put on the record statements, you know, and whatever else happens here, I do think that we need to call upon Snowball to change the name of Agassies that they use on their slopes. Now, that's a conversation couched in many layered issues, but at least that should be a part of this as well, as we seek to go even further with a new understanding around how we all get along on that subject. But I just thought I'd throw that into the mix. I hope they're listening over there, because this is long overdue. I think it is, it's being driven by our youth, it's a community-supported activity, and really, I'm kind of, you know, I guess I'm kind of naive, but I'm feeling optimistic that this will quickly move through the Arizona Board on Geographic and Historic Names with a good result, and that we can plow forward with our bigger ambitions through an act of Congress, because I just think that these sensitivities are changing, people are starting to understand the dynamic and the history involved here, and really, this is honestly low-hanging fruit in terms of ways to rectify and reconcile past mistakes and aggressions, and it's always appropriate to take another look at what we call our sacred spaces, because these sensitivities change and evolve over time, and people change and evolve over time, and the way we understand ourselves as individuals and as members of a community and a collective also change over time, and we should be allowed to reflect that in the very words we use to call what is sacred what it is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Makaius and Fawn, and all who have been involved in this process. I am wholeheartedly in support of moving this forward and sending out as strong of language of support for this as we can. I asked the question about individual or council statement of support primarily because I want our statement to be as strong as it can be, and agree that a joint and unified statement has a lot of power coming from on behalf of council, but also want to ensure that we all remain mindful of the power of our individual voices and speaking up and speaking out on these sorts of topics. You know, I think it was Fawn who made the statement of this being rooted very much greatly in generational trauma, and I could not have expressed that better myself. I also was able to participate in the Indigenous Peoples' Day presentations, and just remember the statement from one of the youth of the fear of not having the opportunity to become an elder within the Indigenous community because of these sorts of things that have happened and perpetuate white supremacist ideologies and Indigenous and BIPOC erasure culturally. And in the midst of that conversation, I remember the statement of the importance of moving from land acknowledgement to land action, and that is something that sticks with me very much in this conversation, and this is a moment and an opportunity, I believe, for us to move from simply land acknowledgement, which is very important, but into land action through that renaming, and I believe it was phrased in the presentation that was shared very wisely as not renaming, but re- And I believe it was phrased in the presentation that was shared very wisely as not renaming, but reclaiming. And I think that's an important thing for us to remember as well, is that we are not erasing the history of of the person whose name is on that peak now. But we are repairing the harm that was done in the erasure of the indigenous cultures and histories that existed in that place that were erased for the sake of that naming. So this is, I think, very important. I want to see us move forward in whatever ways we can to move this initiative forward, to spark these conversations, as you said, that will come from this proposal. And in whatever ways that we can support this, I want to be part of that. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for the work that you have put in for years to make this happen and to get to this point. And I hope that we are able to move forward in a way that is not a continuation of the legacy of just wait for it. I want to see us able to take action. And I'm reminded of the phrase that I have brought up from that side of the lectern to council of if not us, who if not now, when? And I think now is the time, and we are the council that can move this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. And just, I really appreciate the comments from Vice Mayor and Councilmember McCarthy and House and the ones to come. I think you're getting the idea how strongly we all support this. And I just, there's a whole list of reasons why I feel very supportive of this. But one of the ones that really stick out for me personally is that, you know, so many times, well, we can't change past traumas and stuff, but this feels very healing, acknowledging the past that was done and acknowledging that we're trying to just re-recognize. And to Councilmember House's comments, to reclaim what was taken away a long time ago as far as acknowledgement. So just thank you all again for your efforts. And, you know, ex-councilmember Adam Shimonie over there is a great coach in running for office. And it's about time that we had some Native American representation up here, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. Councilmember Sweet and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this forward and being here tonight. I am both humbled and inspired by this conversation and by you and my colleagues. I love this, so thank you. I am very supportive of moving this forward, writing the letter as strong as we can. And I love the name Omaki. That's a beautiful name. And I look forward to having more community conversations surrounding this and the sacred peaks. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. A moment in time turned into a movement. And so that's, those are my words. Those are the words of Dr. Guthrie. He used to be ethnic studies professor at NAU. So a moment in time, you've turned into a movement. And so congratulations to all of you for all of your work on this. It has never been whether or not I supported the name change, and I did from the very beginning. I just wanted to make sure that we were not promising something that we could not deliver. And so now that we know the process, we can write our letter individually, collectively, and any other groups that we belong to, to send those letters of support forward. And for the groups that I'm a part of, I will definitely be taking this back to them and asking them to weigh in on the conversation. I was aware of the conversation when it started years ago with the Black Student Unions at NAU, when they wanted to change the name Agassiz to something else in their union. And so again, I say, a moment in time changes into a movement. So with that said, staff, you have, I guess, my okay or my vote to move forward with as much speed as we possibly can to get this done. And whatever name is chosen, I will be at those conversations, but I will be silent because I think that the indigenous population need to make that choice. And we need to listen to what they have to say. And so I will be at any meetings that occur, but I will not be speaking. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. To wrap up, I'd just like to, again, thank the youth. And I hope that that adults that mentor youth and our youth as they're coming up can see their power through not only this. I mean, you all have done so much. But I hope that this is a moment where you can really feel your power and mentors can help the youth understand how powerful they are and how welcome into the conversation that they are. Vice Mayor said something that I wrote down. This creates a future together. And that really resonated with me. And I see this as as a way to acknowledge and honor our kinship, as Rose so beautifully put it. And our respect for each other. And this is merely one step. This is just one step in our process. And I'm honored to be a part of that step.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Unless there's some objection, I would suggest that the letter that goes out says that this got unanimous council support. We want as strong a letter as possible.
All right. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Makaias.
Thank you all. I appreciate your voice and your words. I'll take that back to my elders and youth and relay them.
And thank you, Mashala, again, if you're still listening. And Fawn, thank you for your courage and your words as well.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 13 is public participation, but I don't have any, oh. Oh, there is an online comment.
There is, Mayor. Mayor, I have Anthony Garcia. Anthony, if you want to go ahead and unmute, you can give your comments now.
All right. Hello, Madam Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Aslan, Honorable Council Management and Staff. I am Anthony Garcia, 2212 North Center Street, Sunnyside, Flagstaff, Arizona. As promised, I am back to expound upon my previous comments pertaining to the potential community investment opportunity in the Sunnyside neighborhood currently being talked about as redevelopment of Old Fire Station 2. For the sake of progress and clarity from this moment on, when I am discussing the future of this project, I am simply going to refer to it as Joel Montalvo STEM Learning Center, or JMSLC. Understandably very aspirational term. But last week, I reported on the history of this project to inform council and the community of its origins. This week, I would like to focus on where we are more at more currently. During the January budget retreat, City Council, or City Manager Greg Clifton was talking through The Color of Money while highlighting an unrestricted and unencumbered $2.4 million in ARPA funding resource. It was at that time that this council first learned of the JMSLC Community Investment Opportunity and its potential for funding through that appropriation. During that council discussion, Councilwoman Deborah Harris made one of the most simple, yet highly impactful comments that I heard during that questioning. And she asked, has anybody asked the neighborhood or the Sunnyside how they feel about this project? I want to personally thank Councilwoman Harris for asking that because that is why I am here before you today and that why we are here before you today with the Sunnyside neighborhood on our shoulders and the group of friends that are surrounding to help the council understand the importance of this investment in our beloved Eastside community. Also, as a member of the Sunnyside Neighborhood Subcommittee, we are currently enacting a plan for community outreach, community input, and community participation. So council can have Deb's question answered appropriately by the citizenry that reside within the Sunnyside neighborhood itself by one of their own me and the rest of the crew that's working on this project. On our end, the Subcommittee is working rapidly to assure council's understanding of the community's needs and wants for this investment. But we are struggling to understand the city's timeline. We are also concerned that the council will not get an appropriate staff presentation before this project, or for this project before the upcoming budget retreat. So I ask you, Mayor and Council, if it is appropriate, time-wise, for this project to be made affair, all caps. And keep in mind that this would have to be done swiftly in order for it to get in front of you before budget retreat, unless there's another plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, informational items too from Mayor, Council, and City Manager and future agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember McCarthy.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. I know we have a discussion coming up regarding snow removal, and I wanted to make sure that we have the cinder discussion on there, which I know we will. But in reference to our historic downtown, the cinders are still lingering and, you know, it causes our downtown to be not only dirty, but a slight unsafe environment for our tourists who are coming in and don't know how to walk on cinders. So I would like that to be part of it. And we had a very informative Capitol Projects Retreat on Friday, and we talked about informing the community on projects coming their way. And on the side of businesses, I would like to make sure that we're informing our business community of the projects. And it might be in a different light than the community. Businesses will need to kind of shift how they operate during a lot of the construction, so I want to make sure that's on there. And my last thing, I would like to thank all of you for your love and support. I did lose my mom. And it's been a rough road, and you all have just been very delightful in checking in on me and helping me through it, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing from me tonight. You know, I mentioned at our last meeting that this is National Poetry Month. And at the Capitol Improvement Project, no, I think that's wrong, but at the budget meeting that we just had, we had a very interesting conversation at the end about potentials for a Flagstaff poet laureate and a youth poet laureate. And I would like to move that forward as a discussion. I don't know if it's necessarily needed as a, if it has to go through a fair process or if it's a process of looking at the development of the standard type of committee to move that thing, that sort of thing forward. I did a lot of research over the weekend on it, and it is actually a very swift and simple process to develop and a voting board for that to move forward. So I would love to get that ball rolling and look at how we can do that in collaboration with the book festival, but also with the typical groups that that runs through. So I think it's a really great opportunity that we have to have something like that for our community, particularly with our avid support of the arts. And we'd just love to see that move forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that the youth poet laureate, I don't know why this is so loud, is already in the works, but but I look forward to the discussion. Vice Mayor.
I'm going to pass to them.
Councilmember Harris.
I want to just support the idea I thought of the poet laureate would be an amazing addition to our city, so I want to do that. I also want to extend an invitation to all within the sound of my voice to come to Ms. Cleo's Tea Party on Sunday, April 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00. You all need two hours of just plain talking with your friends, your neighbors, and your relatives. No business, no program, just fun conversation. So see me about tickets or go out on Eventbrite.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge also the retreat that we had on Friday. It was overwhelming with the amount of projects we have going on, but very exciting that we're bringing so many of these projects now. Getting ready, really close to putting shovels to the ground, and it's going to be a lot of inconvenience in the meantime, but as Councilmember Sweet said, that, you know, just keeping everyone informed and looking at the end result is going to be great. Also, since Friday, we've had several crazy emergencies, and I just want to acknowledge our public works and and any departments under there that were quick to respond to the breach in the Lower Lake Mary levee. And today I had the opportunity to go out with Ed from Stormwater to look at the 180 culvert issue. And I have to give props to the retention slash detention ponds that were quickly installed last year. They're doing a fabulous job and playing a dual role with this unexpected snow melt. And there is a, you know, big concern with, it's a big project to fix for ADOT to fix this 180. It was really staggering to see the failures of the sidewalks and stuff. And I know it's ADOT, but hopefully, thank you, Greg, Water Services, Public Works, Emergency Management, and Community Development, yes, all of them, has just responded quickly. And there's a big project going on out there to just fix it, and hopefully we'll continue just great collaboration with our community partners to get that fixed. I just wanted to acknowledge all of their work.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. I was lucky enough to go out for a tour of Camp Navajo with Economic Vitality staff and with Gail Jackson from Ikonah. I've always wanted to go out there, never been, and that was great with the Arizona Commerce Authority. They were in town for two days, and staff and Ikonah staff took them around all over northern Arizona for two days. Then last week, Vice Mayor and I, as well as staff, were fortunate enough to meet with Congressman Eli Crane. He came to Flagstaff, and we were glad to host him, and we had a great conversation about forest health and flooding, which seems to be the two topics that we're talking about with everyone. And then also, I'd like to thank Attorney General Chris Mayes for coming up to Flagstaff and meeting with Councilmember Sweet and Vice Mayor and I and staff, as well as all the other meetings that she had in Flagstaff while she was here. So, City Manager, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.